George Sound Scott County Planning Commission Agenda for October 10, 2019, 6 o'clock. I'll need the approval of the September invoices. Somebody's giggled. So we've got a motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The approval of the September 12, 2019 minutes.
I'm making a motion.
So, a motion by Mrs. Mizell. Seconded by Mr. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed? None? Okay, next on the agenda is, I just lose my place, approval of the October agenda. Joe, do we have any changes?
Yeah, I need to add a couple things.
Okay.
First one is a plat relocation in Homestead subdivision.
A what?
Plat relocation.
Are we gonna put that under business?
Yeah, under.
Other business?
Yeah, it was a consolidation plat of two lots. And the owner wants to revoke the plat and split it back into two lots.
Okay.
So it's something we have to take through the commission.
In Homestead?
In Homestead, you and me.
And what else?
And then under other business, if you want to discuss the tri-village conditions of through, we'll be mentioning that you want to talk about.
Yes, sir. Anything else? Okay, so I need a motion for the approval of the October agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Smith on the other end. Or Mr. Stone, I'm sorry. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. D on the agenda, items for postponement or withdrawal. Do we have any postponement or withdrawals, Joe?
No, sir.
Okay. Consent agenda, we do not have anything eligible for consent agenda tonight. Okay. And jumping right into old business, PDP. Oh, yes. For everybody who signed in to speak, would you stand up and Mr. Perkins will swear you in? Thank you.
Do you swear affirm the statement should make tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, old business, PDP 2019-31 Hotel Development on Ichabana Path, preliminary development plan for a 90, I thought it was 92, but 93 room extended stay hotel on 1.8 acres located southeast of Blossom Park Drive and Ichabana Drive.
Okay, this is a preliminary development plan request, approval request for a 93 room hotel, extended stay hotel Marriott branded. It's located next to the old Golden Corral building that's now abandoned or now vacant on Ichabana Path in the Cherry Blossom area. This is the location. I think you all know where this is located. This has been postponed three times. So, we've kind of gone through this before.
I'm sorry.
Essentially, this is the site at the corner of the icon, the old, what's called the Icon property. It was owned commercial in the early days of the Cherry Blossom subdivision development. It's zone B5, this whole area is zone B5 in the gray. It's accessed by Ichabana, a newly, a road constructed or extended by the city about four years ago. But the main access to this commercial area is from Connector Road, which is right here, which, here's the access to the commercial area. And this is the light at the Walmart and Cherry Blossom Parkway. So when we first got this project in and reviewed it back two months ago, we had a few issues with it. The main issue was because of the height of the building, it's a, it's a four-story hotel, 55 feet high, next to the Cherry Blossom, what's called the multifamily area, but it's developed with duplexes, townhomes, and single-family lots. The main, main issues were the height of the hotel being adjacent to that residential area. We wanted to make sure that there was a wide enough buffer there that was planted thick enough that it would provide some screening to the adjacent houses on the street. Also, we were concerned about the dumpster being located next to the residential area. We were concerned with the parking, general parking layout, and this entrance being adjacent also to this residential area. During the postponements, the applicant met with the neighborhood, they met with staff, and they made some changes to the development plan. So from this plan, we're now reviewing a slightly modified plan that was submitted before last corrections, so we could review it. They've moved, I've kind of illustrated in this previous slide, they've moved the dumpster to the other end of the site. They've moved the entrance over, away from this single-family home. And they've, they've expanded that buffer area to a 15, from a five foot to a 15-foot landscape area with a double row of trees planted within the buffer. We've also requested that they provide some right-of-way for a potential future expand or extension of Connector Road. In the Northeast Georgetown traffic study, there was a plan to make that a kind of straight realigned intersection and extend Connector Road straight across to Old Oxford. I've showed you all that traffic study before, but essentially what, what the plan originally was, long-term plan, kind of straighten out this intersection, add a light, and then extend the road down to Old Oxford, so you make that a true kind of four-way intersection. Whether or not that happens, we don't know at this point, but we did get dedicated right-of-way from the Cherry Blossom multifamily area and from the mill apartments, so that road could happen. So we want to make sure that we, we get that, that, that right-of-way, or at least that area reserved for that, so that street could happen. Spade Corporation owns this lot. They have no plans to move, but if they do, and that's redeveloped, then potentially that, that realignment could happen. So those were the major issues. They've corrected all our, they've made corrections to all our requests, and the current plan complies with all the design requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. So the plan itself is in full compliance, and we do support the plan and think it's, it's good use for the site, and the design meets all our requirements. The only issue really remaining is the traffic at that, and mainly, it's at the intersection of Connector Road and Blossom Park at the PM peak hour. So AM peak, it's functioning at level service C. PM peak is level of service F or E at that intersection. So the main concern is how is this project going to impact, further impact that intersection at PM peak hour? So even though this project doesn't require a traffic study, they did complete a traffic study, and I think they're here to explain the findings of that. Essentially, I don't want to summarize it, but what I got out of it is that this use itself is, is one of the lower traffic generating uses that could go on this site, that would be allowed in the B5 district. Because of the hotel, the peak hour for a hotel is spread out over a longer period. A normal peak hour when you're looking at traffic is the rush hour, you know, four to five, maybe extended a little bit longer, but hotel peak hour generation is spread over, you know, check-in periods, so from five to 10 is what they've said in their, in their traffic report. So, so the peak hours spread over a longer period. The gen, peak generation, traffic generation for a hotel is, they're showing it as 55 trips, and that's coming in and going out. They've shown in the traffic study that they're only generating 30% of the traffic in this commercial area when you factor in Planet Fitness. So even though the peak, the PM peak intersection performance is, is bad at level of service F, the amount of traffic that this use will generate is not significant when factored into the rest of the commercial area. They've also made the point that there are improvements that have been made recently and planned in the future for Connector Road. The state has repaved and restripped Connector Road, adding some turn lanes into Starbucks, I believe, a left turn in. They've extended the turn, the right turn at Cherry Blossom, I believe. They can go into this, but the state has made improvements by resurfacing and restriping Connector Road, and they have, they plan in the next month to six weeks, I think, to add a click curb system and to reduce the Oxford Road and the Marathon gas station access points to right in, right out. So that, that will allow more turning movements without people being blocked by, by cars coming in and out of Oxford in the marathon. So it'll improve traffic flow. It'll allow better, better access to and out of Blossom Park. Planet Fitness also added a new road between Oxford and Blossom Park to improve connectivity and to add another way out without having to go through the subdivision. It will also force traffic out to Blossom Park as well, which, long-term, will make a, a light there more viable. It may increase, that may increase people coming over to Blossom Park as well, irregardless of the hotel. I think people coming from Applebee's, if they want to go left, south on Connector are going to have to come to Blossom Park now. They're not going to be able to turn left out of Oxford. So it's gonna, it's gonna change the traffic flow in the area a little bit, but it'd also make that intersection more likely to, to qualify for a light, yeah, or get a light. So I think I've gone over all the, all the items on the development plan that we were concerned with that have been addressed. So it comes down to the traffic, I think, in the area, whether this use as proposed warrants approval, because you'd have to find that the traffic it generates is in, is not, doesn't significantly impact the off-site intersection that serves, serves this hotel and this commercial area.
Thank you, Joe. Questions for Joe? Mr. Wiseman?
Yes, you said, you gave a 30% figure that whenever it built, that that would be 30% of the traffic coming down Blossom or out onto Connector? Is that what you meant by that?
That's the percentage they came up with. I was quoting it out of the traffic study, so I'll let them answer that. But I think it's 30% of the, of the commercial traffic in that B5 area. They're, they're contributing 30% of the, of the commercial traffic.
You know, that means if, if at that time, there'd be 100, that means there's 70 now, and that would increase 70 by 30, it's really 42% increase, and that doesn't seem insignificant to me.
I think they were looking at the Planet Fitness traffic.
That would be included, but that would be part of the 70 that's already there.
Yeah. There's also a lot more traffic coming through that area, so when you, I think they were just looking at the two, at the uses in the B5 area. But if you, yeah, percentage, if you just look at them and Planet Fitness.
Did you use the word insignificant, though?
Well, I'm, I may have.
5% might be insignificant.
If I did. I meant in the, in the context of the overall traffic coming through that, that intersection. I probably misspoke, I shouldn't have used that word.
Thank you, Mr. Wiseman. Any other questions for Joe Kane?
Yeah, Joe, the, the, you mentioned the, they reserve the, the right-of-way for that new road that may or may not ever come through there. On the, the map that I have here, it shows the arrow going into their property. Where is that right-of-way? Is it, is all of it coming out of their property, or does half of it come out of Spade?
Well, half of it will have to come out of Spade eventually.
Okay.
Right now, it doesn't, it stops at the Cherry Blossom line, so, let me see if I can, I don't think I have a good, right now, the right-of-way is, is reserved, it's dedicated on the, on the apartment plat.
Right.
It's reserved on the Cherry Blossom plat to the, to right here.
Yeah.
There's nothing dedicated or reserved on the, on the.
Rest of it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they, what, essentially what they're doing is reserving the right-of-way, so not putting any buildings or encumbrances.
Parking along there.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Kane? All right, thanks, Joe. Would the applicant come up and speak? And just for the record, Byron Moran, Commissioner David Vest, and Commissioner Jeff Caldwell
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Bruce Simpson. I'm an attorney, I'm representing the applicant in this case, Rainmaker Properties. Mr. Keaton Patel is one of the principals in that firm, and he's here tonight, along with Jihad Alani, president of Vision Engineering, engineering firm who's done the site work. Mr. Alani's done a lot of work, engineering work, development work in Georgetown. I'm sure you've had the opportunity to engage with him previously on other development matters. We appreciate the staff's report. I think Joe is very clear that we are, as we stand before you tonight, in complete compliance with all, with all of the published criteria set out in the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations that pertain to preliminary development plan approval. Those are the criteria that we have to meet to secure your approval. And I'll come back to that, because that's going to be an important part of the discussion as we go through our presentation, because I think there's some misunderstanding of what the standard of decision-making is relative to this. And I've discussed this issue with Mr. Perkins, your attorney, previously, and I provided him a letter with some legal discussion about that, just for the sake of educating him of where I'll be going in terms of our presentation tonight. But before I get into that part of it, I want to share with you that we did, as Joe indicated, we met with the neighbors, probably a couple of months ago, had a really good turnout at a church nearby. I know several of the folks are here tonight. The president is here, along with some other neighbors. Of course, I got, I've gotten to know these folks because I represented Planet Fitness and, and their application that came before this body a couple of years ago. So I'm familiar with the area in general, and I'm certainly familiar with the traffic issues involved, because we had to, to deal with those quite extensively, as you might recall, with the Planet Fitness case. But the other thing to keep in mind that's very important in this case, as you consider it, is this, this property's been zoned for almost 20 years. So we're not talking about a zone change tonight. We're not asking you to go from one zone to another zone, from agricultural zone to a commercial zone. That's been done. It's been zoned as it is since 2000. Now, it's been slow in developing, but it's been zoned, and the entire area around this area has developed after this property got zoned. All the homes in Cherry Blossom Golf Course, all the developments that have now feeding into Cherry, to Blossom Park and going in Connector Road in terms of the residential facilities, and also several other commercial facilities along Connector Road, all came about after this property got zoned. The reason that's important, obviously, is there's been certainly an awareness by your predecessors on the planning commission that at some point in time, this property was going to have tenants, was going to have users, and the traffic was going to be coming. So it's not, I just want to make it clear, we're not surprising anybody about this. This property's been, you know, everybody that's bought around it has known full well that it's owned commercial, and that at some point in time, we're going to see buildings on the property. There was an attempt several years ago on the Planet Fitness property, if you will, to convert that to apartments. The neighborhood objected vociferously to that proposal. I was not involved in that project. I read about it, and I'm not sure whether it got voted down or it was withdrawn because of the opposition. But in, in any event, for 19 years, it's been commercial. We're not talking about a zone change. We are talking about a preliminary development plan after the zoning. And so the issues that usually are associated with a zone change in terms of traffic impact and stormwater and environmental and all those kinds of things that go into consideration that have to meet the tests set out in KRS 100.213 to get a zone change, they don't apply in this case. What applies in this case are the, are the objective criteria that's been published in your zoning ordinance and in your subdivision regulations under KRS 100-281. Those are, those are the governing standards, and that's always important because we, as, you know, in decision-making, we have to follow what the law says, we have to base our decision on. So, in any event, we've met with the neighbors, we've, we've talked to them about the changes that are coming on this property that's been zoned these many years. We entertained their questions. As Joe indicated, we made some modifications at their request to move the dumpster and to move the setback to some extent to deal with the landscaping and the buffering features. And I think have been fairly responsive to any questions that they've had. The neighbors are here tonight, and I'm sure they'll let you know whether or not we've been responsive to any concerns or questions that they've had in connection with, with our, our specific proposal. So we've got, we're in compliance with all the criteria, and Joe has submitted a rather detailed report outlining all of this, about six pages. And, but we get to traffic concerns. And so, let me talk about the traffic. Now, how do I, do I do the, you got a flipper, or can I?
I just, I want to hear your comments.
All right here?
Yeah.
All right, now, before I blow it up.
Page it down and page it up.
I should have brought a different set of glasses. Okay.
I can advance it.
All right, well, this is the site plan, you've seen that. This is kind of a colored-up rendering of what it looks like with some of our landscaping of, of the hotels. It's a four-story, it's a Marriott. It is a high-end extended stay Marriott. So these are going to be business people that will be staying anywhere from several days to more than a week or two, or two or three weeks. So it's set up for business people coming into Georgetown to do business. There's not a lot of typical tourist traffic, people coming and going and this and that. These are people that'll often work from their hotel room, except for going out and, you know, meeting whoever they need to meet with in the, in the central Kentucky Georgetown area, of course. And the reason that's important is, when I talk about our traffic study, we wanted to be very conservative. We didn't want to exaggerate any of the features of our traffic study. And if you look at the, they have, in traffic studies, they have what's called an ITE trip generation manual, and it calculates trips generated by any potential user, from a hotel to theater to restaurant to whatever. And these are based on nationwide studies. And so if you look in hotels, there's different, different trips generated, I want to talk about trips, motor vehicle trips, by different kinds of hotels. The kinds of hotels that go, that you have for vacation are the highest trip generators, because they're coming and going with more frequency. The hotels of extended stay have less trips per day. We use the highest-end trips per day for the vacation-type hotel, just so we were conservative. So our numbers are conservative in terms of our impact. The other significant feature is, we did not factor in the new connection between Blossom Park and Oxford Drive. As you know, Planet Fitness put in a new connection between Oxford, between Blossom Park and Oxford Drive. It's just been opened up a few weeks. We did not factor any impact that that connection would have relative to the intersection of trips that we would be generated to the intersection. We presumed that all the trips generated from our hotel would come to Blossom Park and Connect, Connector Road. So, so you know that we were, we were conservative, and all of this is set out in our report. And Ben Krebs and Joe have both reviewed it, so I wanted you all to be aware of that. This is a elevation of what the hotel will look like. They have one of these in Richmond presently. We shared with the neighbors when we met with them, if they wanted to go to Richmond and take a look at the hotel in terms of what the look would be, that they could travel over to Richmond to take a look, and that's, it'll be the same kind of development, same kind of hotel that we'll put onsite here. As you know, Marriott's one of the top-shelf brands in the industry, and so it'll be a Joe mentioned the striping. When we met with the staff, this is about three months ago, we've had several meetings with them, of course, they suggested, what can you do, what can you come up with that would help the traffic situation on Blossom Park and Connector Road? Now, I've been through this before with Planet Fitness. We'd met several times when I was with Planet Fitness on trying to get a signal. We had the state, as you may remember, those of you that were on the commission at the time, come before you, and, and I know the chairman grilled them pretty strong for about an hour about the need for a stoplight. We want a stoplight. I know Planet Fitness wants a stoplight. I know the other property owners that have vacant land want a stoplight, and we're pursuing that. But we're not there yet. So within our power, when I say within our power, I'm talking about Mr. Patel and his partners with respect to this hotel, met with the state again several times, what can we do? We want to minimize traffic conflicts, we want to make it safe for the community and for, certainly for the people that will come and stay at our hotel. So I'm going to suggest that our lobbying efforts with the state resulted in them responding with going out and repaving Connector Road here, and looking at ways of redirecting the traffic to deal with safety issues and traffic movement issues. And so what, what they have done in the last month or so, if you go out there on Connector Road going up to 62, is they have added, we put in a right turn lane to get into Blossom Park, striped that off to make that clear. And we put in a designated left turn lane into Starbucks that wasn't there before, so you didn't have to wait for people to make a left-hand turn. And you have another lane that could go past Starbucks. We also, they also added about 75 to 80 feet for a turn lane on Connector Road to make a left turn lane into Blossom Park, which will allow more stacking, so it's not spilling over. over in the pass-through lane over here, which helped, you have less cars stopping and, which minimizes accidents. The other significant feature that was done in connection with the state's improvements, that's a little bit closer view of what I was just talking about. The other thing that's talking about, and Mr. Halana here can talk about in more detail, you've probably seen these, they're like plastic stripes that stick up out of the ground that preclude people from making turns across the median. What are they called, John?
Quick curbs.
Quick curbs. And what they do, what they will effectively do, this, again, this was just to illustrate when we did our traffic study, this connection point that was put in by Planet Fitness between Blossom Park and Oxford Drive, this was put in, that wasn't factored in into our study. We just presumed that all of the traffic would come out, out here on Connector Road. And I thought we had a picture of the quick curbs, but maybe we don't.
You did.
Okay, on the left, yeah. Better eyes than I did. Yeah, on the left, right here. So, I'd sent, I contacted the state, at Joe's request, we met with him a couple of weeks ago, and asked Kelly Baker, the chief engineer for District 7, when are you going to put those in? And he sent me an email back, and this was like the first week in October, I think October the 3rd, and I sent it to Joe and Ben. It's on order, and they should be installed within four to six weeks. So what this will mean when these, when this gets put in, is that at Oxford Drive and Connector Road, which is, if you may remember, has been recommended for right-in, right-out for like 10 years, but nobody has done anything about it. But, the state finally said, we're going to do something about it. And so effectively, when that's, when this gets put in, these quick curbs, this is going to be right-in and right-out only. There won't be any ability to make a left-hand turn in here, nor will there be a left ability, will there be any ability to make a left-hand turn out onto Connector Road now. This is the highest accident area on Connector Road. There's been like, I think, 20 in the last three years. So this will eliminate a significant problem. Again, we don't have any ability to do that ourselves, or didn't, but I am, we're claiming through our efforts at the urging of Joe and Ben, that the state did respond. They may have responded anyway. The point of it is, this needed to be done, and it's going to be done. So in terms of traffic safety issues and what we've been able to deal with, we're eliminating a major safety problem here. We've got expanded left-turn lanes on Connector Road, we've got an additional right-turn lane on Connector Road. And of all the potential users that are permitted by right to go into this spot right here, the hotel is, as Joe indicated, one of the least intensive, one of the lowest. And the extended stay is the lowest of the lows in terms of hotels, such that I asked our engineer who did the study, so what is the major impact? If we look at it even on the most conservative assessment in terms of traffic impact, based upon the trips that this hotel will generate during the times when it's the busiest, which is what they call the peak hour, even though our peak hour is different than most people's peak hour because they're coming from work, and the people that are going to extended stays go there at a different timeframe. But we looked at it conservatively, and the actual difference, because of the relatively low trips that we're generating, is only in the PM peak hour. And that's a 20-second delay in making a left-hand turn getting out to here, a 20-second delay, and a two-second delay of making a left turn into Blossom Park from Connector Drive. So, and that's looking at it without factoring in this connection and looking at this as a vacation hotel rather than an extended-stay hotel. So we wanted to share the data, and as Joe indicated, this is a minimal impact in terms of traffic. But let me be clear, as I mentioned at the outset, and I don't, I don't mean to get legalese on all this, but sometimes in these proceedings, I think it's helpful and it's also, it's also necessary in that, at this point in development, and I've been doing this a little while, the standard of decision-making for planning commission members is, does this development plan comply with the published requirements of the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations? And those have to be objective standards. They have to be something that can be measured. Are you within the setback? Is your, are your streets wide enough? Are your fire lanes wide enough? Is your building within the height of the zoning ordinance? Things that can be quantified and measured, not subjective assessments. And as Joe indicated, we're in compliance with all of those. Plus, we're a low user. But really, we don't even have to be a low user because the standard is, are we in compliance with those objective criteria? And we are. I'd share with Charlie just a legal memo, just for the sake of his edification, in the case we had any discussion about it, because, you know, in Joe's report, he indicated that we have a burden to show that we're not going to add any significant traffic impact. That's not, that's not, it's not a published standard. Now, I understand why you all, as planning commissioners, would like to see major improvements, as would we. We want to have as much access, any retailer will tell you, we'd like to have a signal right there. We would pay, help pay the money to have a signal right there. And that's what we're working for long-term, if we can get it. Now, we've not gotten very far with the state on that, as two years ago, in the same room we found out, but we're still pushing for it. We have made progress in getting this right-in, right-out. We've got some improvements that the state was able to get just by re-striping this. But in terms of the standard, it has to be objective. And there are no objective standards regarding traffic at this stage of your all's approval on a development plan. There simply aren't any. And subjective standards aren't legally enforceable. So, I'm not going to say any more about that unless we get into a discussion about it. I needed to talk about it, just simply because it's part of our presentation. But in terms of what we have submitted and what we are entitled, as any person, any of you all, if I was representing any of you all, I would say the same thing. We're in compliance with all the criteria, and we're entitled to get approval. We're here to respond to questions. We, Mr. Patel has been a good citizen and a good neighbor everywhere he's gone, and you can check out his properties and see how well they have been maintained, and check out his reputation. It's not going to be any different here tonight. We're sensitive to this traffic situation, but we certainly don't want to be denied just because someone has a perception that the traffic's bad and therefore we can't approve any more commercial development, because that is not the legal standard that is applicable in these cases. So, we think we've got a good project, we're going to make a worthy contribution, it's a very low-intensive use anyway, as even Joe will indicate, Ben will verify. We've submitted all our data to them to vet, to see if our representations are fair and accurate, and they are. Be happy to respond to any questions in connection with our proposal, but we certainly ask for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Any questions for Mr. Simpson at this time?
I'm sure we'll have a few for you here shortly.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, anybody want to speak either for or against this application? Please come up to the lectern. No one here to speak?
Yes, I didn't get a chance to sign in.
Do you swear affirm the statement you make to the truth of best superior information to leak?
I do, yes.
Thank you. Your name, sir?
Neil Thompson.
Same to you.
Yeah, I do.
Mark Webb. All right, Neil Thompson, Mark Webb.
So, a few, I'm trying to think of everywhere to start. First off, no disrespect to, but it doesn't sound like there's a need for a planning and zoning committee if it just needs to be approved based off of whatever the, you know, what's the purpose of you all even being here if that's the process. But as you look at the picture, all this stuff has no effect on Blossom Park Drive. If anything, all of this makes traffic on Blossom Park Drive worse. Making a right-hand turn out of Oxford Drive means people, and right-in, right-out only means more people are going to be coming onto Blossom Park to get to where they need to on Oxford Drive. So, no one, and all, and all they did was re, the paint was gone off of Connector Road, and they repainted it. They didn't put in anything new. There was no construction. They just repainted the lines that have been faded over the years. So it's still the same turn lanes that have been there, the same ones that we have to deal with when we're trying to get out of Connect, off of Blossom Park onto Connector. And then as far as, I'm trying to wrap my head around what's considered a low-impact hotel, because if it's an extended stay, my thought is those are working professionals, right? So they're going to be coming back to the hotel between 4:00 to 6:00 PM after their jobs, when everyone is going to the gym and leaving the gym from getting off their jobs. So I don't think the traffic, and I, I stay in hotels over 50 nights a year for my, for my job, and I've stayed in a town place in Swayton many times for one night. I didn't stay for a week, I didn't stay for two weeks. I got on the Marriott app and found the cheapest rate, and that's where I stayed. You know, it didn't have any effect to me that it was an extended stay or anything like that. I got the rate, and that's where I went to stay. So, I see a hard time seeing that the traffic's going to be less if these are supposed to be working professionals that are staying there for a week or two. They're going to be coming in the same, at the same point. And I was just curious as to when the traffic study was done. I walked in a couple of minutes late.
July, July 1st.
Okay, so Planet Fitness opened three weeks ago. So if y'all want to see what traffic looks like, come over in my backyard, and you can see the cars coming in and out of there from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and there is a significant amount of traffic on Blossom Park every single day now, thanks to our friends at Planet Fitness. It doesn't end during that timeframe. And there is still, out of all this, I still don't see an easy way for us to get out of our neighborhood. There's not an easy way. That Planet Drive was the worst possible thing that could have been done two years ago, was to allow that little street to get in, to get put in. Because that's only making it worse for Blossom Park, for more people cutting through the neighborhood. And I feel like as, you know, people that live in the community, we come here and say what we, what we feel, but we continually are getting put back in a smaller corner, and a smaller corner, and a smaller corner, to where we can't even get out of the neighborhood. I mean, it's getting that bad, and will, you know, this is not going to have the impact of a Planet Fitness. I agree with that, but it's still going to have an impact, and especially with, I talked to Mr. Lusby on the council, and he told me that it wasn't a done deal yet because the city council still wants to speak with the state about this right-in and right-out. I even read it in the paper two weeks ago, that the state essentially said they could do what they want, but the council still wants to speak to them about the Connector Road issue. And I just, it's disappointing sometimes to, you know, I just, like I said, I feel like we're getting pushed back and back and back, and finally, you know, we're the people that live here every day, we're the people that generate the revenue in this, in this town, and we love it here, and just people come in and they build something and then disappear, and they don't have to worry about the day-to-day stuff. And we have to deal with it every single day. And whether you all have the ability to deny this or not, you know, it sounds like a legal issue, but I appreciate what you all do, and I think you all should have positions here and, you know, some people are making it sound like your, your points aren't valid and it doesn't matter if you all vote or not, but I think this should definitely be denied.
Thank you. Next, and again, state your name and address.
Mark Webb at 131 Burke Dale. Just a couple, I'm going to pile on basically what he said. The road was already there, the lanes were there, they were just in really bad shape, and I don't know if the state, town, who, but they finally repaved the whole road and actually marked it from where all the lines had faded over time. So, while it's nice now, five years, 10 years, you kind of get back in that cycle again. So, anything they're saying about, oh, how we've improved the road to make it better, the traffic situation at that intersection, I just, I find it valid personally. The other thing is, he talked about objective criteria, but I guess the question I have is, is safety at that intersection objective or subjective? And when people pull out into that intersection, that's a subjective call on when they're going to pull out and how much traffic there is. So while you can use objective criteria for, to help with decisions, a decision has to be made by drivers on when they're going to go out into that traffic there, and is it safe? Okay? With that in mind, during the Planet Fitness meetings, there was some discussion here about, will anything else be put in there before that intersection is fixed? And that occurred with members of the commission. So, we're basically asking the same question again, is something going to be approved and put in there before that intersection is fixed? That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Anybody else want to speak?
Hi, my name is Linda Angel, and I reside at 100 Spyglass Drive. I am the corner house right behind Planet Fitness, the first one on the right. I am Neil's neighbor, and I do agree 110% with what Neil said, and I do agree with what my neighbors here said as well. The traffic, it only gets worse, you know. I invite you all to come out and see, and you know, that's why I've invited Planet Fitness to come out and see themselves. See at night. You know, there are some issues that I still have remaining open with Planet Fitness as a resident there, and that being in my backyard. There's still many open issues with them that I've not gotten response on, and one of them was the lighting. When it was opened up on the 26th, it was like something out of a movie. It was something out of a Christmas Vacation. The lights go on, and it lights up. It's like the Great American Ballpark. And you have no privacy in your backyard. So we did speak with them, and they said they would get back with us once a resolution, but we've never heard anything. The lights stayed on, there were some, guards put on some of the lights, but then some are not. So that, that issue still remains open. The issue, I know they proposed here with the hotel doing the barrier, you know, the foot, the 15-foot, I think it was, we have that, you know, in our, we've got that barrier, we have the trees, but the trees in our area, they're all dying. They put them in July 3rd, July 4th, it was hot and drought, no water, the trees died. They said they would put in six-to-eight-foot trees. We had said, you know, 10-to-12-foot to give us the height, but what's happening is, the trees are dying. So they have to start back over again, and we're losing that as well, as a barrier. And therefore, our home values are decreasing in that area. I know our resident, my friends here, their home has been for sale, and they said they got no bites on it, but the people said, the ones that came to look at, well, it would, but that's behind you. So I, I just have a couple of issues, I was going to say, with the, with the hotel. I would definitely make sure that lighting is put on there to have some attention because it does light up your backyard, and you have no privacy, and the traffic is worse. I've had to call the police two times to, because of the people speeding in that area, leaving the fitness, leaving the fitness that are cutting through Cherry Blossom, you know, and the safety that goes along with it. I just wanted to let you know, I do, I still have many concerns, and I, I hope this issue is looked at carefully and the traffic is resolved. There's, it is just of high importance that that get resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. Anybody else want to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. I'm Patricia Fannin, I live at 103 Burke Dale Drive. I'm the president of the Cherry Blossom Village Homeowners Association. I'm here representing 352 homes or lots. Personally, I have no issue with a Marriott moving in to our neighborhood. I've been a Marriott customer for over 25 or 30 years. We've had people come to me that are concerned about the riffraff that might come and stay there for long extended stay. I've assured them that I really don't know any riffraff that can afford a Marriott, because they're not the low, you know, they're not the people who leave the light on for you. Nothing wrong with those. Nothing wrong with those places, I've stayed there as well. But, the problem is the traffic, and we keep talking about this and talking about it. I had the question, I don't know, Bruce, maybe you can answer this. Did you talk to the state about a roundabout there?
Actually, you know, Ms. Fannin, what we want to do is kind of keep it in order. Address your questions. Mr. Simpson, take your notes, and he'll answer everybody's question at the very end.
Hold that thought. That's one of my concerns, was a suggestion. I know a city councilman that lives next door to me said that he had recommended that a long time ago, and the council has looked at that. To me, that would be the issue, and they said, well, there's not enough land. I said, well, then buy the land, or purchase the land, or have the state help get the land for a roundabout. To me, we were just in Hilton Head this last summer, and the roundabouts are fantastic. They can just go, keep that traffic moving, keep, I never saw one accident. Not that they don't happen, but people just learn how to get around those roundabouts, and it really keeps the flow of traffic going. So, that's what my recommendation would be, that we push that. Also, I just wanted to let you all know, if you didn't know it, our state senator lives in our neighborhood, right across the street from Linda. So, if we need to put some pressure on the Department of Transportation, he might be a source that could help us, because this is a very dangerous situation. I think I gave you guys the phrase the last time, the pop intersection, pull out and pray? Because you do, you just, you just pray, oh, I hope she can get stopped, I hope he gets that truck under control, you know, and, and they just fly around that corner. They come out of Lowe's and Kohl's, and they hit that gas pedal, and they're headed for that red light on Cherry Blossom Way, and we, we fear for our lives when we go out there. But that's my only concern. I, I think a Marriott will be a good addition to our neighborhood. I'm glad that it is extended stay and not in-and-out vacationers, tourists that want to see the ark, or the, the horse park, or whatever. But I, I think it'll be a good addition, but I really do, and I am concerned about the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fannin. Anybody else?
I didn't swear in, but.
Do you swear in firm?
I do.
And your name, please?
My name is Brenda Holt.
Brenda Holt?
Holt, H.O.L.T., 202 Ikibana. And I live right next door to the Marriott. So, and I just want to say upfront that I have no problem as well, you know, had, with them being my neighbor, as long as the lights don't shine down, and they were very accommodating with some of the issues that were brought up. My biggest concern is the traffic and the intersection at Connector and Blossom Park. I can give you an example today. And number one, I had to go back in and read the law. What is the law about driving? And that's not a four-way, it's not a three-way. When I'm coming out and I want to turn right, which is very often, it's like there's a car coming out of Starbucks, either to turn left or to go straight, so I'm fighting two. You know, there's two there. So, this afternoon, I'm coming out to turn right, so is a car turning left. Now, in the way I read it, I have the right of way. There, a truck pulled to her left and cut her off and gunned it right up toward Cherry Blossom, so that's exactly what happens in that intersection. My concern, even though I'm in favor of the fix of the stops, but in really busy traffic, I will, being a cautious driver, will turn right to avoid crossing traffic, and I would turn into Marathon and go back out. But when the stops go up, I won't be able to do that. I have no way, other than to go all the way around to 460 and come back. So, just, you know, I appreciate if you could give that some consideration.
Thank you, Mrs. Holt. Anybody else want to speak, either in favor or against? Okay, thank you. Does the applicant want to answer a few of those questions?
I will endeavor to do so, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and, and I appreciate what the, what the neighbors shared. As I indicated, I've been involved in real estate development for quite a while. I've represented neighborhoods, and still represent neighborhoods in these matters. And I think it's a pretty, much a given in my experience, certainly my own experience, is how I got involved in this, with the new development that started behind me, is I'm very, I liked things the way they were, and I didn't want them to change. I was comfortable with the status quo, even though I bought up to what I thought was going to be a horse farm forever, little did I know that it was being land-banked for apartments. And the dead-end street that I thought I was living on the corner of a dead-end street and a neighborhood street was something called a stub street that was planned to be connected up to the apartments. And then behind the apartments, which I thought was another horse farm, was also turned into be a shopping center. I wasn't happy about those changes. I should have appreciated that I bought up next to vacant land, that there was, might be a change at some point in time in the future. And they had to go through a zoning, and I got involved in, in the zoning process, and we were able to work out some agreements with the developer and come up with at least a situation that we could live with. In this particular situation, this land was zoned commercial and available for everybody to know, commercial, long before the first house was built around it. So, it's not like these folks are coming in surprising anybody. It's been known to be a commercial development long before any of them bought their homes. So, there's no surprise element. But that still doesn't make any, any less easier to accept that vacant land is now going to have a use on it. That's permitted under the law, commercial use, that's what it's been for almost twenty years. And I understand that, as, as a citizen, as a person that lives in a neighborhood, I understand, I would prefer that it not be used if it was me. Just keep it that way, and you mow it and let me look at it, and it's a nice green space, and that meets my needs, because that's what I like. But unfortunately, that's just not the way. Reality is, in terms of use of land, and if it's zoned, someone has a legal right to have those uses that were approved by this body and affirmed by the city council many years ago. And so, we're here tonight, it's been a slowly developing piece of property, and a lot of development has taken place around it, and, and now it's a busy intersection. Scott County's been one of the three fastest-growing counties in the state of Kentucky for at least fifteen years. And with more population and more density, becomes more traffic. And when you have infill projects like this, it's harder to accept as a, as a person that lives in that neighborhood. I understand that. But it's also governed by the rights of people that own that land, to be able to use it as the law allows. And that's what we're really talking about tonight, and you all are here to, to make the decision based on the standards that govern your decision, in terms of the evidence, in terms of what, what you can do under the law. And as I said at the outset, we have met the legal requirements for approval. Does that mean we're insensitive to neighborhood concerns? Absolutely not. I'm not here to tell you that we're not, we're not, that we're, we are sensitive to neighborhood concerns. And as the project unfolds, I, I know from Mr. Mattel's past experience, we're going to be reaching out to the neighbors and responding to any concerns or issues that might come about as the construction takes place. But this whole property that, is, it's going to be developed, it's going to be coming. Market is there, the economy is there, it's going to happen, and we're going to have more of these hearings. I don't know if I'll be involved in them, but somebody will be, to come before you and try to come up with something. The last thing a developer wants is a fight with anybody. We want to have everything worked out if we can get it worked out. And sometimes you can't. And at the end of the day, you all, as people appointed pursuant to statute, Kentucky statutes, appointed by the mayor, whoever else appointed you, you're governed by what the law says you can make a decision on. And in these cases, it's only fair to, you let the property owner know, what do you have to do to get a development plan approved? Show me what I need to comply with. I need to know, I want to know, so I can do it. And we've done it. And that's not in dispute tonight. I say that only to suggest this. We haven't done anything that's not right. We've done everything that's legal. We have been transparent in everything that we've done with respect to the people that we're going to be living next to as future neighbors. I think even the neighbors who have dealt with me in connection with Planet Fitness will tell you that I have been 100% responsive to every call and text I've received for the past two years. It won't be any different with this hotel.
Do you want to address, or, and I'm not even sure if it would be you to answer this question, the potential of a roundabout?
We did look at that. Mr. Hillelani can go into the engineering detail if you like. We've looked at every conceivable traffic option to help make it safer. Jihad, why don't you come up here and explain to them the issues involved with a roundabout?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jihad Hillelani. We spoke with the Transportation Cabinet, I believe, because of the roadway, the way it's super-elevated and slow, and then the size of the area, the available area, I don't believe it's going to be, something is going to be approved that way. I mean, we can revisit again, but that's their first response to us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that's, that's all I have. Be happy to respond to any other.
Any questions for Mr. Simpson by the commission?
I don't really have a question, just my, my comment would be just that I think the residents, this, this commission, planning staff, we all feel like our hands are tied, but it's not by anything that we can control. It's, it's all state, it's a state road, Cherry Blossom State Road. If they can't give us any, any help or any suggestions, we're, we're at their mercy.
And I know we've done this in the past.
Stacking distance is a huge problem, they, they don't want to put a light in. Connector Road was, Connector Road came about because of Cherry Blossom and Toyota moving here, and the interstate, proximity to the, to the interstate. They need to come up with some solution to that, or this, this is going to go from bad to paralysis. When you get paralysis, there's no movement, you know, there's.
I know nine years ago, I managed a business right there on the corner, and nine years ago, I was asked if I wanted a light there, and I absolutely said, yes, I want a light there. I've been on the commission here for five years, and anytime something comes up there, I continue to ask, and have been, have been in favor of a light there. But even to Commissioner Smith's point, our hands are tied. I think everybody in this room who's here, against it, for it, it doesn't matter, we all want a light. What we've done in the past is we've sent a very strong message to the Transportation Department, asking for a light, but I think we keep falling on deaf ears. I don't know, Charlie, what else we can do. I've made the comment when Planet Fitness come in, the first time somebody's killed on that corner, we're going to get a light, and I was told that's not the way it happens. And I told the gentlemen from the Transportation Department, I'll see you when that person gets killed when they put that light in, because that's what's going to happen. And, and I don't know of any other thing to do, Charlie.
Persistence, I'm sure, is not going to hurt, but on the other hand, we've had meetings, and, and not as many in recent years, but when I was still at the city, we had incredible number of meetings, and basically, they had checklists. And when those checklists were satisfied, the changes were made. They were cordial, they were interested, they worked. But the road improvements that we thought we needed, we, we didn't get until checklists were satisfied, other things, maybe new developments that added to, to traffic burdens, they did, they never did anything because we said please, period. That's not to say we shouldn't continue writing that letter. Part of the problem, as I understand it, and I may be wrong in my facts, but when Connector Road was built, it was built rather haphazardly. It was not built according to the state's standards, and as such, it's been difficult to insert that into standards ever since. And, and I can't imagine that's changed any, despite all the things they've done through the years, you know, to try to make it work better. But it was put up rather haphazardly, because we needed some businesses, and, and basically, people were allowed to do things. And so, now we've got a, a little road that probably isn't where it ought to be. Well, you've also got owners up to that road, which makes it difficult to get more land to do something else. Again, I'm not saying we don't keep trying.
Question I have, as our attorney, and we're all taxpayers, including me, I live here in Tone, instead of asking for a stoplight, as, as our attorney, can you draft a letter saying we want a stoplight? Not a please, not a, would you consider, just say we want?
Sure, we could write the thing and say, there must be one. You know, we, we cannot continue, we must have one. I mean, I, oh, I can make it as strong.
So, I've asked, as a commission, if you draft that letter, and I'd be happy to sign it.
I will, I will draft it, and, and when it's as strong as you think it should be, then we'll, we'll send it.
Sounds like a plan.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Wiseman?
I have a comment about the fundamental issue here. Just because something is zoned correctly, and it meets the comp plan, and all the other rules, doesn't mean we have to approve it. We can say not now, you know, it can come, but we don't think because of traffic, or because Scott County's developing too fast, or, or whatever, we can say not now. We can't turn it down forever. We can say not now, so we do have a right to make the decision.
Why don't we talk about that if we, Mike, Mr. Chairman? You're, you're really referencing more a determination that the council, or the commission makes at the time of a zone change. The law specifically refers to Platts and development plans as ministerial acts. In fact, many commissions will just basically say, staff, when they check all the boxes, you sign it. It doesn't even come to the commission. And the reason it doesn't come here is because you guys are here for discretionary, which is by and large recommending ordinances, ordinance changes for regulatory and that sort of thing, doing studies, and then recommendations on zone changes. You don't make recommendations on regulatory compliance. That's the checklist. So, this really isn't the time we do that. Now, we've talked about it before, that there may be a time in certain circumstances where a traffic problem, or some other kind of just, you know, major deal is such that we need to take a chance and, and make a decision based on that, even though it's not in our regs. It's not the sort of thing I'd recommend, because that's the sort of thing, generally, that fails when things get appealed. If we were going to do something here, maybe it would be to try to rezone the property that's left. Well, then basically, you're taking people who've had it zoned for twenty years and saying, oh, never mind, you know, after investments are made and so on. Well, that's a, kind of a treacherous direction to take also. So, yeah, all I can say is, that's a little too easily stated for the situation. This is considered a ministerial act, and ministerial acts are usually a, this is nothing personal, but a functionary checks the list, period. You know, they're not reviewing things except, I'll give you a good example, a building inspector. We once had a huge blow-up with the state, and we said, no, the building inspector is a discretionary employee, making decisions all the time, policy decis, no. He measures, he's got a tape measuring, a pencil, he might have a calculator, he's a functionary. We, we lost those arguments, we spent a lot of time on it, but we lost those arguments, because it's not policymaking, it's checklist-making. So, that's why, no, sir, I respectfully have to disagree, although I've said before, we can take a shot at that, if, if it's a serious enough situation, but generally speaking, no, we really don't do that. In ministerial propositions, we look at the checklist, and we've got a very specific set of regulations, and we have a staff that's reviewed them and says they're in compliance.
Then why did they come before us tonight, instead of just doing it?
Because our planning commission said years ago, we want these things to come before us. Our staff has never had, with the exception of minor, minor Platts, I think, has never had the authority to go ahead and do that. We have, well, for my thirty-five, four, whatever years, we've always said, we want them here. Number one, the commission wants to know what's going on, down to the details, which is, I think, appropriate. Number two, they want the public to see a lot of these things, even if there are situations we can't do much about, we want the public to have a word about it, we want to get that information, we want to be able, as best we can, to make adjustments in the future. And so, yes, we want them to come here. There are other communities where, no, they wouldn't be here. As Senator Staff said, they've hit all the boxes, it would have been done, and they'd have been looking at construction plans.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to just say something. I don't know if you all realize that this isn't the only meeting we have. We have a work session earlier in the week, and, and all of you all are welcome to come to that. But several months ago, Mr. Thompson, you made reference of, you know, we didn't have any say-so. But the, the first time Mr. Hillelani came before us, we said, no. But the first time Mr. Hillelani came before us, we said, no, we're not going to approve it, and here's why. And we talked about the location of the entrance into the place there, the dumpster, had met with the homeowners association at that time, and we said, you know, you need to go do these things before we'll even consider it. And so, some of those things have been checked off, and I understand where you're coming from, and you all understand also that that property there and all over town, people bought to make an investment in, and when it falls into that category, that they meet, like Mr. Simpson said, all the requirements, we kind of have to approve it. Now, we can make some changes to it, but like he said, the time to oppose it was when it went from agriculture to commercial, because it's been commercial all these years now. And, you know, I grew up here in Georgetown, so I've seen all these changes over the years, and I remember when Broadway was a two-lane road, when US 25, you know, all the traffic from Detroit down to Florida came right down through town there. So changes have been made, and hopefully, we make the changes to make them fit our community as best we can, and there's going to be some growing pains along the way till we get that light in, and until that happens, till the state decides it happens, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about it, and hopefully, just work with it best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mifflin.
And one other thing, I advise the homeowners association to get hold of their senator that lives in the neighborhood, and sit down and talk with him. That 352 people would have more of an impact on his thinking than nine members up here.
I'm talking to him right now.
Okay, good.
Oh, thank you. Do you want to come up to the microphone, so we can get it on?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. I remember when it first came to agenda, I think, three months ago, and it came in and got postponed. When I was reading the agenda, I believe it came from planning and zoning that their recommendation was to deny it. I remember reading everything, and it said their recommendation was to deny it. Is that still their recommendation? And if not, what changed in the last two to three months?
Jill can answer that question.
I think Charlie mentioned it, they adjusted the buffer, removed the dumpster, they changed the entrance, so they comply with all our...
I think also, they mentioned...
But all that was on there, it said it was denied based on traffic.
I was going to say, and I think if I remember correctly, Jill can either agree with me or disagree, I think they said they were going to have a traffic study done, and they didn't have one done three months ago, and that was part of the big reason why it was declined.
I thought he said it was done in July.
Had to be more than three months ago. It was just, yeah.
It was completed at the end of August.
The traffic study was a count.
Yes, I've got it.
Thank you. So that's probably why.
The comment I would have is, is hopefully, with each incremental addition of traffic, maybe we'll get, maybe we're getting closer to getting a light put in there. I don't know, I don't know what it's going to take to get something to truly address the problem, because my biggest fear is that when we get a new hotel in there, suddenly that entire area is going to be filled in, just a matter of a couple, two or three years. Then we will have paralysis, and there won't be any movement.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other, Mr. Wiseman?
Just a comment about, apparently, the requirements we put on the tenants of these properties, as Mrs. Angel mentioned, that Planet Fitness is not really complying with the lighting and the buffers and everything, so what do we do about that? How do we enforce that?
Jill, you want to address that?
Well, they need to comply, so if the trees die, they need to replant them, yeah. If the lighting is, the issue with the lighting is a tough one, because, you know, you can, the ordinance and the standard is, keep the lighting off the adjoining property, but it's still going to light up their property, even if you screen the bulb itself. So lighting next to resident, commercial next to residential parking lot lighting is tough to, you know, it's not going to be dark, it's going to be lit up, so that's always, you know, our standard is that the lights can't shine into the yard, so they need to comply, so if they need to put up more screens, it'll just have to be monitored, and they'll have to, they'll have to make the changes.
Replant those trees.
Yeah, they'll have to replant the trees that die. There's at least, you know, a year maintenance period. Ten years from now, you know, if a tree dies, it's a little bit tougher for us to come in there and make them plant a new tree, but yeah, initially, you know, they got to get the site into compliance and make sure.
But even 10 years from now, if it's brought up by a neighbor that, hey, we used to have 12 or 20 foot worth of tree, and a neighbor, you know, tore them all down, there, you can still come back 10 years from now and say there was supposed to be a buffer there, they decided to take it down, or trees died, and if you bring it to the attention of planning and zoning, we will still enforce that. So even 10 years from now, we'll make them replant trees if they die five years from now. Thank you all. Any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Is there another question from?
Did I see one, or somebody else want to speak?
Was there another question from the audience?
No, I didn't think so.
I thought maybe you had one more earlier.
Any, okay. If not, we need a motion.
That's a move, that we accept.
So, Mr. Stone made the motion to approve?
To approve.
So motion made by Mr. Stone.
I need a second.
Second by Mr. Mifflin. And we'll do roll call, just because. So this would be in favor of approving PDP 2019-31. So, Mr. Wiseman?
Because of traffic issue, no.
Okay, Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
I'm inclined to say because of traffic issues, no.
Okay. Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's been approved. The applicant can go and sign the appropriate documents with the attorney. Thank you all for coming and your time. Next on the agenda is ZMA 2019-38, Ramsey Property, Zone Change. Zone change for 1.137 acres from A-1 to R-1A, located at 2394 Cincinnati Pike, and this is a public hearing. So we open it up for public hearing after Michaela speaks, or is it?
No, I would make her's pardon public hearing.
So we have actually opened this up as a public hearing. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Like you said, this is a zone change request for going from A1, our agricultural zoning district, to R-1A, our single-family residential district, for 1.137 acres at 2394 Cincinnati Pike. So this is the site here. The project site is 6.137 acres, so they're looking to just do a zone change for 1.13 acres, so just a portion of the site. To the north here is Rippton Meadows, to the east is Moonlight Subdivision, and then just some other agricultural properties surrounding it.
Bless you.
So this is just an area of the site. There is an existing residence here. My understanding is that the intent of the applicant is to keep this existing residence, and they're looking to essentially cut the property here, the 1.13 acres, and then put a second dwelling on the remaining five acres. So this is a copy of the concept plan, so as you can see, here's the existing residence, the 1.13 acres that they're proposing to rezone to R-1A, and then this would be the remainder that would be A1. One of our requirements within the county is that we have a minimum lot size of five acres, if you're going to be on septic. This property does have the ability to hook onto sewer with deluged plain disposal, so they have indicated that they will be able to hook up this 1.13 acres onto sewer, and they are asking to hook up the remaining five acres onto sewer as well. All right. For any zone change, state statute dictates that it requires certain findings to be justified, so I'm going to kind of run through that for you guys. The first part is, let me just flip here. That needs to be in compliance with our comprehensive plan, so I'm going to skip down to our future land use map. This kind of shows what we project as future land uses throughout the city and county. So our future land use map designates this 6.13 acres as rural residential. I did put a definition up here of what we classify as rural residential, but basically, the big point is that the lot types within this zoning designation include traditional single-family or cluster lots. Staff interprets that to mean the traditional five-acre lots that you find within the county. That's our density requirements for the A1 and A5 zoning district, all throughout the county, of one dwelling unit for five acres. With this proposal, we would be moving into two dwellings within the six acres, so it wouldn't be meeting that density requirement that we look for within the county. I also did put what we classify as urban residential growth down here, and so this category includes the broad range of all urban residential uses, including low, medium, and high density. So what they're looking to do for the 1.1 acres is the low-density use, a single-family residential. So I find that it's not in compliance with our comprehensive plan, so that means that you need to move on to one of the other two additional findings that you would look for. So the existing zoning classification given to the property is inappropriate, and that the proposed zoning classification is appropriate. I do find that the existing zoning classification is appropriate, and meets our density requirements that we're looking for. Within the county, we look for an A1 or A5 type of agricultural district, so I do feel that the A1 zoning district that is on this property and most of the surrounding properties is appropriate. And then finally, if there have been any major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature since the most recent update of the comp plan, the comp plan was most recently updated in 2016. Most of the properties, I can go back up, that you see surrounding this site were subdivided and platted prior to when our most recent updated zone comprehensive plan. So Rippton Meadows was done back in, I think, 2000, 2001, something like that, and Moonlight Subdivision was done, well, I don't even know the date on that one, but it was prior to that.
I was a mere boy when that was started.
It was well before I was born.
No, you weren't.
I was even younger than that.
So needless to say, that zone change, and it was platted well before our most recent comprehensive plan, so I wouldn't say that anything within this area would classify as a major change in economic, social nature. This is, you know, this is what you see. This cluster subdivision here does meet our five-acre density requirement that we look for. There is a preserved area up here to maintain that density requirement that we look for in the county. So with that, sorry, staff is recommending denial of the zoning map amendment, but if the commission does choose to approve it, I do have some conditions up there. Also, I believe the applicant's lawyer is going to speak, but they did put together some findings for you, so I put a copy up there for you guys.
Any questions from Ms. Michaela, from the commission? Thank you. The applicant liked to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Jacob Walburn. I'm an attorney that's here on behalf of the applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Gary Smith, who are seated on the front row here for you today. Probably the best news I have for you is this case involves no discussion of traffic. So hopefully, we can appreciate that. This is an exceedingly simple request, so I don't intend to take a whole lot of your time. It's very easy to understand. I take some minor quibbles with some of the things that staff has represented to you, want to talk about that briefly, and of course, give you an opportunity to ask your questions. This request is simple, we want to add one house. This is a zone change that unlike maybe any you've ever seen, it's a request to add one unit. So clearly, this is not something that has come about due to any financial reasons. Why has it come about? Well, unfortunately, Mrs. Smith has been diagnosed with a medical condition, and she's no longer able to stay in her home, and she needs to be able to live in an accessible environment. And so when they reached out to me, they said, we own this property, it's about six acres, what can we do? If we had 10 acres, we wouldn't have to be here, we'd just do a plat and divide it in half, and we wouldn't have any problem. But because the farm is a little bit smaller than that, we have to ask for your blessing to move forward, and we hope that you will, because I think this is a very worthy application for your consideration. Why not just retro the house that's there? Well, these folks have had long-term tenants. And sometimes you hear long-term tenants, you think they've been there two or three years, two or three years. No, these folks have been there more than a decade, and they don't want to displace them from this house that has become their home. They'd like to be able to preserve that home for the folks that live there now, who are actually also here with us tonight, if you wanted to ask them any questions. And just take that, basically, what is the house and its functional yard, put it on its own lot, because it's under the five-acre minimum, it has to go to R-1A. The rest of it would remain A1, they would build one house, and you'll never hear from them again, because they couldn't do anything else with the property. This was a request that you all heard some years ago. I was not involved at that time, I don't even know if I was necessarily even an attorney at that time, but it was, I think they were very surprised at how things had gone, and but now their situation has become untenable, and they need to come to a resolution on what to do here, so we're asking for your assistance with helping craft a solution for them. A couple of just minor points, we have several of our neighbors that are actually here to support us tonight, and I've got to say, those are good neighbors, if they would sit through the last discussion and still want to express their support. But for the record, we did circulate a petition among several of the neighbors, asking if they would support our application. A number of them did, and I will submit that for the record at the conclusion of the hearing. I think Michaela did an excellent job telling you about 10213, and I don't want a lawyer at you any more than the last guy, so let's take one of those considerations off the board. I don't think there's been any physical or economic change in this area that's happened since your last adopted comp plan that could serve as a basis for a rezonance. So let's not worry about that one. Let's talk about the other two. I have a slight disagreement with the staff's analysis about what rural residential calls for in your comp plan, primarily because that five-acre minimum lot size is not called out in your text. I think if you'd wanted to say that, you could have said that, but it didn't. What in fact did you say? The comp plan talks about different characteristics that you are looking for in the rural residential future land use map. It says that these should be less dense than urban areas. Well, I think it goes without saying that this proposal would be far less dense than the neighborhood that you heard from in your last hearing, or in other areas throughout our community. In fact, it's quite a bit less dense than the neighborhood that is immediately across the street from them, that Charlie rode his bike through when he was a boy. What else does it say? It says it should be rural in character. This does not change the rural character of this area. The addition of one housing unit will not appreciably change the, or I think it all change, the rural character of this area or corridor. It says it should not drain resources, that we don't want to put more of a hole on our resources, our roads and our systems, for rural development. This requires absolutely no public infrastructure to be done. Sanitary sewer already exists on the site, and they've committed that they will connect to it, so there is no drain on your resources whatsoever. No roads are needed, no additional infrastructure, it's ready to go right now. It should not increase transportation demands. Well, so I guess I lied, I'm going to talk about traffic for five seconds. This is at best a traffic addition of one. Unfortunately, Ms. Smith is not able to drive a car, so it's just her husband, and I've got to tell you that the practical impact is zero, because these folks go out to their property now, so there will be no traffic impact on this application, if you approve this application whatsoever, and to that, I think we can all say, hallelujah. And the final commandment of rural residential, or description of rural residential, is it should not divide large or prime farmland. This doesn't. This is 6.1 acres. It's not productive agricultural land, and I'll get into a little bit more on that here in a moment. But aside from that, going away from the future land use map just for a little bit, you all also articulated a number of other goals in your comp plan, aside from what the future land use map says about goals for this community. Here are a couple of things that are listed in your comp plan that I think this proposal meets. It helps provide a full spectrum of housing, providing accessible housing, I think, is certainly an admirable goal, and is in line with what with what you've articulated in your comp plan. It preserves existing, and I would note currently utilized, housing stock. And also, you note in your comp plan that barriers towards affordable housing should be decreased. Displacing long-term rental tenants, I think, actually increases barriers to housing affordability. So I think that this application could be considered acceptable under your comp plan based on the text of that document, and at the end of the hearing, I'll provide you with some findings, if you would like to go that route. But that's not my best argument. I think the better argument for you to consider here today is the other potential avenue under KRS 10213, which is that the current zoning is inappropriate, and the proposed zone is appropriate. And so, and that is a direct quote from KRS 10213-1B. And that is one of the findings that you all can make for the appropriateness of a zone change. So when I try to figure out whether, so that's a two-part analysis, right? First, we have to decide whether the current zone is inappropriate, and then we have to determine whether the proposed zone is appropriate. So I look to your ordinance. What do you all say about A1 land? What is the intent of A1 land? And from your zoning ordinance, I would quote that in the A1 section, it says that these restrictions that we've put on A1 land are required "in order to conserve agricultural lands for continued farm use and to minimize urban-type development in rural areas." As we noted at the work session, and as several of you all noted at the work session, this is not agricultural land. It's never gonna be agricultural land again. And one of the things I love about practicing land use law is you all get to apply common sense. You all know that 6.1 acres up in the northern end of the county is not a viable agricultural operation. But if you had any doubt about that, I've brought some proof for the record tonight. I did a little bit of research on what constitutes a successful farming operation. What do you really need for these to be economically viable? So first, I found what I think is a wonderfully titled magazine, Successful Farming Magazine, where they did an analysis of various types of farms, and how much acreage would be required for them to be profitable. They went through dairy farms, winter wheat farms in Kansas, pretty much anything you can grow. The one that has the smallest necessary land use is just a general grain farm. And this author, named Sean Williamson, I'll submit the copy of this article for the record, says that "The farmers I spoke with," and I spoke with at least 100, "said that you would need at least 500 owned acres and 1,000 leased acres to make a living." Now, that's one person's opinion. Let's go to another one. This is from the Michigan State University Extension Office, where they talk about United States Department of Agricultural Guidelines and Standards about how we classify our farms. They classify a small-family farm as a farm that has gross annual sales of less than $250,000. And they further go on to state that small-family farms average 231 acres in the United States. So we would need to increase our land size by 46.2 times to get to the average small-family farm, that farm producing less than a quarter million dollars in annual income. And of course, as you all know, farming's far more complicated than that. You don't just need the land, you need the equipment. There's a lot more that goes into farming than just the dirt. But, when, you know, my path of least resistance is, well, what does the government say about it? What does the Commonwealth of Kentucky say about farming? This is KRS 132.010, which is actually a taxation chapter in our state statutes. And they define what is an agricultural use for property taxation purposes. And they tell us that agricultural lands means any tract of land of at least 10 contiguous acres. So even if this proposal is not approved tonight, they can't even be taxed as a farm under state law. So I think that goes very clearly to show the inappropriateness of the agricultural use. And I will submit copies of all of these for the record at the conclusion of my remarks. And of course, now I misplaced my outline. But that gets us only halfway there. I think we would all agree that 6.1 acres is just not sufficient for agricultural operations. But what makes this an appropriate use? Well, when I give other zone change hearings, I've sometimes been accused of going on and on with PowerPoint presentations. I didn't do that tonight, because I only need one photo. You can look at this photo. This is a larger overhead view of the parcel layout immediately adjacent to my client's property. You can see there are numerous lots, some that are zoned A1 and some that are not, that are actually smaller than what they're asking you to do. The existing area right now, in fact, the property immediately adjacent to them, has almost the same setup, except instead of one additional house, it has two additional houses. Across the street, you have an entire R1A zone neighborhood. Next door, yes, you do have that cluster development. It's only able to meet that five-acre minimum because of the huge open space in the back. The lots at the front are much more comparable to what we're talking about. Now, the other thing that we talked about at work session that I wanted to be able to have a specific response for you tonight, was concerns about precedent. Okay, these folks may have a compelling case, they've shown you a need, it's an unfortunate medical situation, and we might be inclined to help you, but we don't want to open Pandora's box to everyone marching in here and asking for the same things. I think that's a perfectly reasonable concern, but I think it's one that we can deal with. This is not a blanket rezoning. This is one additional unit. The A1 zone is still remaining. We're only carving off the one little piece. We're not chopping it up into two A1 pieces that could come in and be subdivided later. There's basically no way that we could do any more without coming back to you and asking for another zone change, which I can assure you, these folks have no interest in at all, and now I've represented to you that they'll never do. Their intention is not to come back and ask for anything more than this one additional house. But secondly, and I think most importantly, as you all know, you hear dozens of zone changes a year, you have to make findings about why something is or isn't, you know, why did you make your decision? And so I reached out to Mr. Perkins, per your all's suggestion, and floated some findings by him, to see that, to try, I drafted them, but I wanted to attempt to narrowly tailor them enough that you could rest assured that if you give these folks what they're asking you tonight, that you will not be opening Pandora's box. Now, I'll let Mr. Perkins speak for himself. I did make a few very minor tweaks to those findings, and I have brought copies for you all as well, and I'm happy to pass those out as well, but I know Michaela indicated that she had given some to you also. So where, what is the summary of this request? It's one of the simplest you'll ever see, one additional unit. It's a deserving request. The circumstances that are behind it are clearly very unfortunate, but they're very compelling as well. Approval of this request will actually save you displacement of longtime rental residents that would like to remain in their home. Everything that's needed for this development to go forward is present on the site today. There's no additional public infrastructure of any variety that would be needed. It cannot be credibly argued that this would change the character of the area. It wouldn't. It matches almost identically things that are immediately adjacent to it. It would not change the character of this area. And as I think this proof that I've submitted for the record will show you, and I think as you all noted at your work session, this is not a viable property for agricultural operations. I know that certain conditions are requested in the event that you were to approve it. Those that are up on the screen right now, my clients are fully agreeable to those conditions, would be happy to comply with them. And I'm gonna present you with these findings that I think you can sleep at night, knowing that you have not opened Pandora's box for people to come in from the county and ask to divide up their farms. I'm not one to make emotional appeals. I don't think they're particularly relevant or appropriate in zoning cases, but I would just ask you to please strongly consider this application, because I've never, and I've represented developers and neighborhoods, much as Mr. Simpson had, all over the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and I don't know that I've ever seen a more deserving case than this one. And so I would ask that you please take their request very seriously, because it would make a huge difference to their lives, and it would make a difference to the lives of their tenants. So with that, my clients are here. If you have any questions about their property, they've owned it for a number of years, I'd be happy to address any questions, and I'll submit these materials and findings for them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Walburn? Or the applicant, Mr. and Mrs. Smith? Any questions for them? While you're thinking, Charlie, you spoke to Mr. Walburn. What are your thoughts, concerns, positive and negative?
Well, first off, let me say that I absolutely agree with every literal word that Michaela presented. I think she's correct. The problem that is, as I see it, while all of these things are in utter compliance with our ordinance, the result of them, with subdivision across the street, regardless of its age or mine, all of the urban-sized lots that completely surround this property, what we've done is we've created an area that is no longer appropriate A1 property. That's not what the intent was back when, you know, we've done all these things, and I'm sure this is probably not the only spot in the county where this has happened, but this property is clearly no longer appropriate for A1 property. As such, I think the selection of proposed findings, and I'm assuming those minor tweaks that Jacob talks about probably don't change the full character, because I read over his last draft of them.
I'm perfectly fine with the old ones, too.
But I think it's perfectly acceptable and correct, and I think it perfectly justifies the zone change. Again, I want to emphasize, Michaela's utterly correct, but I think there are circumstances which give us this opportunity to take property that really is no longer appropriate in any kind of real sense. And one thing, while Jacob says this gives the commission an opportunity to use common sense, I really don't believe in common sense. Everybody's experience is different, and a lot of the people who I think have the same experience as me don't have anything resembling what he defines as common sense. So I really don't necessarily agree with that. But I do think this does not comply. The situation this property finds itself after all these years of everything developing around it, it's just simply not A1 property anymore. And the most appropriate zone other than that is for the reason Jacob said, is appropriate for what they've asked for.
The one question I have, I think, would be to the farmer to my right here. Would you farm this land in its current condition, anywhere you're at?
I wouldn't farm it by itself.
That's what I'm talking, that's the answer I'm looking for. Okay, thank you.
And I'll submit these materials to Charlie for the record.
Any other questions? Then I think we need-
I'm growing six acres of corn now, so it's-
I heard you laughing over there when he said 1,500 acre minimum. There's some people in the audience, I think-
It's not your only acreage that you farm, just six acres.
It is just six acres.
That's irrelevant. I couldn't make a living on it.
Yeah.
That's what his point was, I guess.
There are questions from, in the audience, people either for or against it, come please speak at the lectern. And for the record, state your name and address, please.
My name is Pamela Hilton Wise, and as of about two weeks ago, I was Wise Path. I'm the one that named it. Very emotional for me, because Gary and I lived there for over 37 years, and I know these people over here, and they think why I'm here is not. The reason is, I just don't want you to bust no more water lines.
That's a home number seven.
Well, I'm just saying, if this gets passed, I can show you, I can walk it off where the water line goes and where it's at. I know every inch of this property. We moved down there in 1982 in February. It was farmed at that time, with tobacco, and then eventually horses, thoroughbreds. But I'm here to represent Wise Path, which is now part of my past and memories, and I wish this couple the best of luck. I really do. I just want things to be done right, and I know for several years, they've had a camper up there on top of the hill where they, I'm assuming, that's where they want to build their home. And I just want them to love that land and that property as I have, and have many, many memories, good memories, to share with your neighbors and surrounding people. Like I've known Philip and Ruby forever. They were my neighbors. And when I say Wise Path, I do mean that. We're the ones that developed that property. We used to own it all. And as time went on, circumstances, illnesses, et cetera, we decided to divide it off. And my sister-in-law still owns five acres back there. And that was Gary and Philip's sister, Orla Kar. We've had a lot of comings and goings, but I can really honestly say, just do what your heart says, and just be careful where you dig. And like I say, I can tell you where everything's laid out in that whole property, where all the water lines run across, and I do, I do have a water line easement that goes across that property and down the easement, down the main driveway on Wise Path. So, and it is recorded, and it was done back in 1994. That's when we moved to the back on our five acres, because we did the same thing, my husband and I at the time, and we got turned down. So we moved to the back, and we sold the whole front off. But, that being said, this is so. It was a rough decision for me to make to leave Wise Path, because that's where my heart's at. But when my father passed away, I was given the opportunity to keep his house or sell it, and I made him a promise that I would not sell. So that's where I'm residing at. 904 Shoshone Trail, Indian Hills, Georgetown, Kentucky. That was my dad, the clock man. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Anybody else here to speak on behalf or against? Okay, if not, then we need to entertain a motion.
No approval of this.
Motion by Mr. Wiseman to approve?
And that would be-
219.
219, number 40.
Based on the findings of fact-
Yes.
-the ones dealing with the inappropriate current classification.
Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
One second.
So this is for, I must have this number drawn wrong. ZMA 2019-39.
Right. Dash 40, isn't it?
Oh, it is, you're right, you're right. I already-
39. That's, you confused me, Mr. Stone, because I was looking at something else. Do we have a motion by Mr. Wiseman?
Second by Regina.
A second, oh Regina, you second, I'm sorry. I missed that. So a second by Ms. Mizell.
You're welcome.
I did, I seen a nod, but I didn't hear the, so we'll just go through a roll call, I guess, just because, well, it's a public hearing. We have to close the public hearing first?
Yes, sir.
So we will close the public hearing before we go to vote, and then we'll do a roll call vote. Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
I would still, I'll vote no, just because I don't think we need to. I don't want to open the door.
Okay, Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. It's been approved. Don't sign the documents Charlie has over there. Thank you all for coming.
I showed you the wrong one.
All right, next on the agenda is Harbor Village PSP-2019-39, and PSP-2019-440, Harbor Village Phase 3C amended, and Phase 4 amended preliminary subdivision plat for Unit 1 Phase 3, and Phase 4 located west side of US 25 Cincinnati Pike at Rogers Gap.
Question just a moment, he wants a break.
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute break. Probably a good idea if Mr. Wiseman-
Can you make it?
Yeah.
What's your problem with all the giggles and all that?
Trying to, trying to get there a minute, called wrong, and I already tucked it under these cars. Oh, we're losing all. Oh, we're outside of all.
Yes, sir.
You've done a great job.
Yeah, we have to prove...
I know you did, thank you, though. Why is it hard? I know you did, thank you, though.
Well, I think, I think we do. Or else, at least, staple to it, you know, the action. You know, with the certification from you all that this was done. Yeah, oh, by the way, Joe, the only, otherwise, the only serious requirement is the signature of the owner of all the properties involved. Well, that's just one. Or it might be a couple, I guess, I don't know. Yeah. Are there any utility improvements in any of these easements? Well, in that case, we'll probably, I mean, this, we've done this, I'm sure it's probably got to be applied. We'll then run it by utilities after they vote.
They went home. You don't know what those are, you think those are law weapons? Here's what, no, here's what, is, we're postponing based on all this, which is where all the issues are. So, so it's really...
Yeah, welcome back to living on the six acres. So we're still... So we're going to amend based to the...
And we still would vote because we're reducing...
That's funny, we're always saying, we're Postponing that.
Now, let's interrupt, so let's get this over with and move on. That's why you got a, got a...
But he did do a good job.
He did, yeah.
I don't hope that went to a printer over there.
But he's got a very...
Yeah, and we postponed...
Who researched this here?
Yeah, oh, yeah, what?
I told Joseph, I'm gonna let my, I'm gonna do my presentation, so that's supposed to under here. So seven fifty-three, I'll be shorter than Joe.
All right.
How's that for a promise?
That sounds like a deal. Joe, keep yours under two minutes.
I mean, they call myself though, they, you know, I just get rolled out, it's all it is.
All right. Let's get started again. I like that gap.
In other words, Regina, sit down.
Yes, Regina, sit down.
What is this?
That's...
All right.
I'm going to get started?
Please.
Okay. This is a preliminary plat request, request for approval for preliminary plat for Phase Three amended at Harbor Village subdivision. And it was request for approval of Phase Four. I think the applicants can ask for postponement of Phase Four. But it also includes, includes an amendment to the overall master plan, which is really just Phase Three and Four, the last two phases. So I'll, I will go over that overall, what's remaining. But the phase, the request for approval of preliminary plat for Phase Four, I think, is going to be tabled until next month.
Postpone.
Postpone. So this is the location, it's the back of Harbor Village, it's the last, the remaining property. Harbor Village was developed along, about the same time as Mallard Point, same developer, I believe. And they were originally intended to be, to connect at some point in the back. So this is Phase Three. I'll briefly go over the history. This road and this road were originally part of Phase Three. Let me go over the, the two thousand four master plan included two, two lakes. There was also a lake on Phase Two originally planned. But this is Phase One and Two here, this, this was Phase Three, and this was Phase Four in the rear. So this was the master plan approved by the Planning Commission back in two thousand four. In two thousand five, the plat for Phase Three was approved. And like I started to say, these two roads were part of Phase Three. They were constructed after two thousand five and, and these lots platted and, and houses built there. This section of Phase Three was never constructed, along with the lake. The lake wasn't constructed. I think that kind of held it up, the whole issue with the lake. But in two thousand twelve, Planning Commission got an application to vacate Phase, the remainder of Phase Three and just consolidate that into one rural residential tract. Get rid of the lake construction and just do it as a buyer, the bank had taken the property back in foreclosure. They had a buyer that just wanted to put a couple houses out there, so they were, wanted to vacate the remainder of that, that subdivision, not, not develop it and just put a couple lots. So they submitted this master plan, Planning Commission approved that. It was appealed, that decision was appealed by a couple of the property owners out there. Planning Commission won that case, it won the appeal, I mean, they upheld the, the decision. So, anyway, in that process of the appeal, appeal process, the buyer went away, I think. Bank took it back. So now they held this property within a, with a vacated subdivision. So new buyer came into the picture. In two thousand eighteen, Planning Commission approved the remainder of Phase Three. You approved these lots. It had a street continuation of Harbor Village Drive ended in a dead-end T intersection or cul-de-sac, I think we would have approved both. But basically lots, same, same sizes in the, in the first two phases in the, or Phase Three. So same lot sizes met all the requirements of zoning. You approved that in two thousand eighteen. The app, as part of that condition of approval, we said, you need, before you do Phase Four, you need to come back with a, an amended master plan because the previous one was vacated. So tonight, in, in doing the grade, grading plans, construction plans for Phase Three, because of the topography out there, they wanted to make a change in the, the road connection between Phase Three and Phase Four. So if you look at this, this is that Phase Three on the previous plan. So you can see where it connects to Phase Four here. So this is approved, but they want to make, amend Phase Three to move this connection to here where the topography's better. The lots, they lose a couple lots, I think, by doing that. The other changes are minor. I mean, there's, if you look between the two, if you're looking up here, I'm sorry to put a slide that blew this up, but here's Phase Three. The new amended Phase Three that you're looking at, this is the previous. So cul-de-sac at the end, necessitate some larger lots at the end. The HOA, open space area, pretty much stays the same. So this is the previous, here's, here's the HOA in a couple lots. So there were, there was question about the configuration of those areas. So they've, they've kind of, after doing the construction plans, they're requesting some modifications to the layout. So essentially, those, the main change is the access to the next phase. So we are, we're recommending approval of the amended Phase Three. We don't see any issues with it, same conditions as previously. We'd like to see on it, they, they either join the existing HOA or create another HOA that's compatible with, with the existing covenants out there. Maintain a buffer along the back. That's, I guess, that, those are the main things. These are the changes, so the connection to Phase Four has changed, the lots slightly reduced, and the lot lines are adjusted because of the change in the road location. I will go back to the overall now. They're also asking at this point to approve the general layout of Phase Four, which doesn't change significantly to what the previous master plan showed. Our, our main issue with the next, with going, continuing on to Phase Four is we need to get a second entrance, or second access to a public road. With Phase Three included, all the lots through Phase Three, if you count up all the lots, two hundred thirty-nine lots total through Phase Three. Our subdivision regulations say two hundred or more single-family lots should have two points of access. The original master plan and zone change showed a connection to Mallard Point. We think beyond, if you go beyond two hundred thirty-nine, which is, Phase Three has already been approved, so we're just amending that. So I don't think we can go back and take away that approval. I think the change in the road location is an improvement to that plan. But we think with the next phase, Phase Four, we need to have this connection in the back. And this is Drake Lane and Mallard Point. We need to make sure that that connection happens because if this road's blocked, if there's flooding, if there's some type of, you know, accident on the road or blockage of the road, there's no way to access all these lots. So Phase Four would be eighty-four additional lots beyond this, this one road intersection. So you have a single road serving the whole three hundred and twenty-three lots, including Phase Four. We've, we've included that in our conditions of approval for Phase Four. In discussing it with, with Mr. Billings, think he wants to see if he can get a vote on the overall concept plan, including Phase Four. But go ahead and postpone approval of the preliminary plat for Phase Four till they can try and have some discussions with the neighbor that owns the land where the access is shown, so they can kind of work out and know, know a little bit more about the feasibility of that access point.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Kane? If not, we'll have the attorney speak. But before he speaks, two things I want to mention, Charlie. If we postpone Phase Four application PSP two thousand nineteen forty, I would say we shouldn't discuss it at all today. Correct?
I would agree with the chair, yeah.
So we won't be discussing Phase Four at all, just with the recommendations that before you decide to bring it, I think it'd be a good idea to have a connectivity of a second road. We'll just leave it at that. And then the second thing I want to point out is I was promised by said counsel that he will be shorter than Joe Kane, and I timed it, it's, you've got thirteen minutes starting now. Thank you, Mr. Billings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my name is...
Can we place some bets now before you say?
I'm not going to waste time, don't cut it in my thirteen minutes. Anybody want to place a bet?
My name is Nathan Billings with Billings Law Firm in Lexington. It's my pleasure to represent Flying Dutchman. I was before you, actually, a, a year ago to the day, October eleventh of last year, on this Phase Three plan. With us tonight, we also have Jihad Alani from Vision Engineering, who's our design professional on this project. We're going to make this hearing very, very simple, I believe. The preliminary plan or the preliminary subdivision plat for Phase Four is being, we are asking it to be postponed as a result of connectivity issues. There's some, a couple other issues the staff knows have, and in talking with Mr. Kane through those, we want to postpone that. I don't know if it'll be back here next month or later, so I would just say postpone generally and we'll let staff know when that's going to come back on. With respect to the Phase Three, Mr. Kane did an excellent job summarizing it. We essentially, as he pointed out, are, where's the, there we go. We're just, we're basically removing the connection that was here and adding a connection here for topography to, to continue this on because of the drop in land will be incredibly expensive to develop. It may be that we have to come back at that at some point for another connectivity issue, but it's beyond where we are today. And because we, we changed this design here, these lots here became bigger, and we sort of shifted the lots down a little bit. So we actually reducing the number of residential lots in Phase Three by three lots. We'll come back with the overall density again in Phase Four. With respect to that, everything else that you all approved last year is exactly the same. So there are no changes at all. There is one comment Mr. Kane made with respect to the HOA documents. The staff report references that the developer would put the lots in Phase Three and, and Phase Four into the existing Harbor Village HOA. You may recall the discussion last year that the Harbor Village governing documents right now don't allow us to do that by right or unilaterally. They actually, as an association, have to go amend their documents to allow us to become a part of their homeowner's association. As we told you last year, we'll tell you the same thing tonight, we are open and willing to do that. There's some things that would have to be done by the homeowners' association. They would have to go out to the members and get a vote to do that. On Monday of this week, one of the principals of Flying Dutchman, Ryan Foster, met with the HOA or a group of people from the HOA. They said they are willing to look at that. Our conditions are just that, one, as soon as, that, that if they become part of the association, they're tied to all the same membership privileges. Two, that they don't, we wouldn't pay dues until a lot actually is sold or a tenant occupies it. And three, we're actually going to have some tighter architectural controls so that the board would have to be willing to appoint an architectural control and, and take over that issue. That, that is have to be resolved tonight, is just to let you all know, just like we said last year, if they're willing to walk through those steps, we're glad to submit it into there. If not, we're going to have an HOA. So either way, staff's condition is satisfied that there's an HOA to maintain the common area, the trail system, and to maintain the architectural integrity of the houses of this. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm impressed.
You told me what to do and I listened.
I'm telling you. Any questions for Mr. Billings? Thank you, Mr. Billings.
Thank you.
Anybody here to speak on, in behalf or against or in favor of this application? Please come up and state your name and address. Were you sworn in, sir? Did you, no, so Charlie needs to swear in.
Do you swear affirm the statements you're about to give, be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
Yes.
Thank you.
Name is Gary Kincaid, I live in Harbor Village.
Excuse me, Jerry Kincaid?
Gary.
Gary.
Gary Kincaid, thank you.
One oh eight Lakeside Court. I'm not in favor, in favor or, either way, against or for. I'm just concerned is Harbor Village Drive is not a US twenty-five or a four sixty, it's a little subdivision drive, and it's got a lot of traffic on it already. And we've had to put a stop, stop sign at the top first, first enter the village, you know, to slow the traffic down. And there's other, between there and, there's other two more streets coming in there. So traffic, as it was in an earlier case, traffic situation is, is going to be the same here, especially if you add, what, two hundred, two hundred units?
Forty-five and then another eighty-nine.
You just got one little access to, to all of Harbor Village on the US twenty-five. You only got one little road going down there. So just keep that in mind.
Thank you, Mr. Kincaid. Anybody else want to speak? If no more, no more, no one else wants to speak, Mr. Billings, if you want to maybe answer that or talk to that point?
So you said we don't really want to talk about the Phase Four thing, so let me...
You can, you can cover it if you need to, which will explain a little bit.
Here's what I just want to say is, there's an application pending for property in, in the Mallard Point subdivision through which the proposed or suggested road around here would, would interplay. The reason we're seeking to postpone is because that plan and this plan probably need to be tied together for consistency purposes, that, that plan should require whatever this plan is also requiring. And so I think that allows the second access point to be given. It's just to make sure that we're consistent then in how we handle both those plans together.
So to answer the, a little bit, Mr. Kincaid, at our workshop on Monday, we talked about connectivity... connectivity with Phase Four being postponed today, which is an additional 89 lots. At the end of this phase, which is another 45 total, which will bring it up to 220, 239. After 200, there's usually a requirement that a second entrance be put in. We bypassed that the last time we approved that, for some reason, I can't remember the exact reason at the top of my head. But before they're approved Phase Four, and that is brought to us, they're gonna have to bring a connectivity, so there will be a second entrance, which does help alleviate some of the property, or problems with traffic, a little bit, as well as also usually for emergency vehicles, fire trucks. Case one exit gets closed, let's say to a flood, traffic accident, whatever, you'd always have a second way in, and that's usually for resident's safety.
Do they have to get approval from Mallard Point? Do they go through Mallard Point?
I would ask you, Joe, do you want to answer that? Or actually, maybe Mr. Billings might be able to answer that a little better. He wanted to know if Mallard Point needed to approve that second entrance, and you could probably talk to that real quickly.
One of the reasons we're asking postponement, because I don't have all the answers yet, sir. I know that there's a private landowner that owns land that we'll have to go through, and then there's roads on the other side, which I believe are public, but I can't testify to that.
And that kind of does hopefully answer your question. Where they want to go is currently private land, and they've got to work with the landowner to get that second entrance approved.
Has been pointed out that the plat that's going on at Mallard Point is a minor plat, which I think is a staff level, whereas ours is a planning commission, so that's why I'm just saying that we, as a whole, these things need to fit together, and it's just outside of, I think, the context of the hearing tonight, since we postponed Phase Four.
Hopefully, that answers most of your questions, Mr. Kane.
I think it's a valid point, but if you've considered Phase Four, is they have access to Mallard Point before you proceed on.
Correct. More than likely. Correct. Any other questions? Right, right now, the way it ends, you only have the one entrance.
My question-
I'll go ahead.
The original development, when they developed Phase One, you knew that additional phases and additional property was gonna be built behind you and access those roads. And the original developer was the same person that developed Mallard Point and Harbor Village, and he had a little bit more control over that, and that is not the case any longer, just like a lot of developments that get sold off over time, and so the ownership changes.
Mr. Smith, did you have a comment, a question?
I had a question for Ben, just on the, you did say that, I guess, both phases of this go to, what, the dry-run watershed?
Yes, the whole, the entire development goes to dry-run watershed.
Ben, you want to maybe get to the microphone, so they can hear you?
Oh, yeah.
All right, all right.
It's, this is interesting, because this is the, this right here is the divide between the northern part of the county and southern part of the county. Everything here drains south, ends up in Elkhorn. Everything here drains north, ends up in Eagle Creek, Kentucky River section, so, yes, all of this drains to the dry-run study, or dry-run watershed, which has been studied extensively by the commission through grants past years.
That brings me to my question, is will there be plenty of stormwater detention, I guess, the stormwater detention? I want to make sure the water's slowing down, because I've suffered some major flooding in the last three years, and a lot of it's because of a whole lot of rain, but-
Yes, because of our-
But that's also some very steep ground up there, and that's where a lot of that, that's where a lot of that flooding originates.
Through our normal planning commission requirements and the dry-run study, which maybe add a little bit more, another layer to this, they will have to document that their development is containing, slowing down the water, and will try to maintain levels as pre, to previous development. Nothing will ever be the same. It never is once it develops, but we will require them to document that they're meeting the requirements. So, they are proposing, I guess, detention in the form of where the culverts go across. They will be smaller than just to pass straight through, pass the water straight through. It'll slow the water down, and ideally contain an area that will hold the water, allow it to saturate some.
Then slow it down, that would be, that would be good. Any other comments from-
So our engineers here, if you'd like to ask any specific questions about that. Also, the Phase Three site has significantly larger lots, which means a lot less of the Phase Three areas actually being built upon, and more of it is still staying green space or forest area. And there is a, slides. So on the plan, this right here is sort of a, the roads being built up where the creek runs through, and there's culverts being done here, but this area, all along here, is being designed to hold that water before it's released downstream, to make sure that we can provide a stormwater panel.
I hope there's just enough infrastructure there for a slow release, because all this is new pavement, and new roof, and-
There is, and that's, there is impervious surface added in Phase Three, but if you look at, compared to like what would be in Phase Four, or what's actually in Phase One, it's actually significantly less amount per acre because of the, if you'll like, for example, just look at how deep these lots are and how big, you know, you only have one house and one dry run there, instead of four houses might otherwise be there. So, it's not a perfect solution. I'm not the engineer, all I can tell you is, you have to write calculations to him, that he signs off on before I'm allowed to move dirt.
All right. In addition to what Ben has said-
If you want, would you state your name just for the record?
For the record, my name is Jihad Hlani, was Vision Engineering. In addition to what Ben has said, there's a massive layers that we had to go through last year, or during this year too, was going through the Corps of Engineer approval for the culvert, and we went through Kentucky Division of Water, and as well as US Fish and Wildlife for endangered species, so there's a lot of more steps that we go through in addition to the stormwater requirement for dry run, as well as zoning ordinance and subdivision regulation.
Thank you. Any other questions for anybody? From the commission? From the audience? If not, entertain a motion. And this will be for PSP-2019-39, which would be the Phase Three amended application. So we got a motion by Mrs. Mizell?
When you make the motion, the conditions of approval in here address Phase Four, as well as Phase Three, so I would, I would suggest either approving Phase Three with the previous conditions of approval, and with the changes shown, or else we'll just have to approve it and strike through the conditions that address Phase Four.
And I think the changes are three less lots.
Road location, the road connection to Phase Four.
Right, with the cul-de-sac versus the connectivity road. So that would be with the changes, then, Mrs. Mizell?
Yeah.
Right, correct. Changes to Phase Three, which are up on the board. I'll read them just for record. Road connection to Phase Four moved south due to top of topography, lots reduced from 45 to 42, and lot lines adjusted due to new street location. So, got a motion by Mrs. Mizell?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Mifflin. We'll do the roll call just because. Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Mizell?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Mifflin?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. Approved. Mr. Billings, go sign the paperwork there with Mr. Perkins.
Do we need to take a vote on the postponement?
No, because it was postponed, so we don't need to vote on postponement.
The chair can do that.
Nope. We're good.
Sometimes we do vote, but that's unnecessary.
Yeah. All right, so next on the agenda is update of previous proved projects.
Well, we had the two items.
I was gonna say, well, that was A, we'll go to B, which is the plat revocation in Homestead. So we'll talk, so, no, we'll hold off on updates. Thank you, Mr. Billings.
We had a request from a homeowner in Homestead. Written request, I'm not sure if he's here, I don't think he is, to revoke a plat. It was a minor consolidation plat. He owns two lots. He hasn't done anything with them.
Mr. Sims, are you here for this?
No, for the discussion of next.
Okay.
So he owns two lots, consolidated them into one. He wants to revoke the consolidation plat and have them go back into two. He hasn't done anything with the lots, he hasn't made any improvements, he still owns them, they have no liens, nothing's changed. But we just have to, in order to revoke that plat, we need to get a vote approving the revocation. And then I'll have to draft a memo, and we'll have to go down to the courthouse. Since it's recorded at the courthouse, we can't physically just go down there and change it ourselves, or just revoke it, so we have to get a, get a vote, and then we can draft a memo, recording the vote, and then we can go down there and revoke the plat.
This doesn't look like a very sizable lot, so how many portion of an acre is it versus what is it gonna become?
Well-
Roughly.
It's on the top.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, Lot 251 is 7,659 square feet, so about a sixth of an acre. And Lot 252, about a quarter acre.
Less than a half acre.
Yeah, so together, they're less than half an acre. I, it's, it's in Homestead Phase Eight, and I had an overall, that I have two of them that I laid out there. You can see where it is in the subdivision.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
No, you can share.
So, did the same person combine them at one time, and-
Yeah. Same owner, he owns both. He, I don't know if he was gonna put a swimming pool, I don't know, I really don't know the reason, but he-
So what are the benefits, or maybe dis-benefits of, if they're currently two, and now they want to go back into one?
No, they're currently one.
I'm sorry, it's one, they want to go back into two.
It originally was two.
So it's the sal, probably the solubility of it.
Yeah.
If that's even the right word. See, now he could sell two lots versus one giant lot.
Yeah. Instead of having a big yard, now he wants to either sell one of them, or sell both of them.
That looks to me like it's consistent with the rest of the projects.
So we just need to make, somebody needs to make a motion.
I made a motion.
So we've got a motion. Now, with it not having a number, we just would make a motion and then carry this over, Charlie, to get it recorded?
Yes, sir.
Just to make a motion, yeah, approving the revocation of plat, consolidation plat of Lot 251 and 252 of Homestead Phase Eight.
Okay, 251.
252, revocation. Okay, so we've got a motion by Mrs. Mizell.
Revocation of consolidation.
Consolidation. So we've got a motion by Mrs. Mizell?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passes.
All right. The last item for discussion is, has to do with a complaint that we got in the office. I don't know if you all remember Tri-Village Storage. At the time of approval, there was a condition written on to the conditions of approval that no openings be facing the access road on Building A. Building A was the main building in the, in the middle of the site. The, they're building it now, and they're putting doors in it, basically. Although, in that building, there's doors, there's no sliding garage-style doors, there's just regular, you know, swinging doors, hinge doors. My recollection was that you all were talking about the sliding doors. So I went back and looked at the, at the video of the meeting, and you all may, I know you can't take any action, because we haven't notified anybody, even though I, that's why Harold's here, I did call the applicant, tell them that we're gonna discuss it, but I looked back at the meeting tape, and it's at two hour, two, two hours and 10 minutes into the meeting. The representative of the, from Brexton, said she's willing to remove all the door, all the sliding doors, or, I forget what she said now, garage doors, or some-
Oh, she called them overhead.
Overhead doors, that she'd agree to that. And then the discussion went on for like 20 minutes after that, and there was reference to doors, and there was reference to openings, but, but when the conditions were written out, Charlie handwritten that condition that was added in, he wrote openings.
No openings.
And that was, that's what went in our file, but then I found out today that when, I think when they were signing them, they had, I don't know, maybe Charlie can tell you that part, but we didn't have the right set of conditions. There was an amended set of conditions after the fact, clarifying what that openings meant. And Harold emailed that to me after that was done, but I, I didn't get it for some reason, I don't know. So there's, there's another set of, of kind of clarified conditions that-
No, 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 no.
No.
What happened, first off, let me tell you what I'm about to tell you, I don't remember at all, which is a little unusual, because I usually remember minutia like this, but I don't remember this at all.
Old age.
No, 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 it's not that. Maybe it was just a few months ago, I was at it moonlight on my bicycle. Six days after you all took action, Doc came, well, again, I have no recollection of this, but Doc, maybe Doc and his clients, I had no idea who all, came to me and said, what does this mean? And I gave the opinion, again, I don't remember doing it, but I wrote it on the bottom of their copy of the conditions, so I know it's me, it's my handwriting, that I believe your intention was, overhead doors, opening. We didn't talk into great depth, I'm sure, because I simply do not remember it at all. Anyway, I gave them that copy. It did not change the conditions, because I don't have that authority. It was just simply, that's my understanding. And as I understand it, they did send a copy, I don't, Joe finally got it today, or maybe yesterday, I don't know. And, who was it that sent it to me? Somebody, oh, I guess they sent it to you, and then Joe copied me or something. Anyway, I looked at that and thought, oh, well, that's my, that's my handwriting, that's my signature, so I guess it did happen, but I don't remember it. Anyway, but that didn't change anything, that was just my interpretation of what it meant. Now, what they've done since is they have put, you know, walkthrough doors on the front of every, you know, our 20, give or take, units.
Is that the only entrance?
I can't imagine it's the only entrance.
I mean, is that the only way into those units? Or are they accessible from the back?
No, 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 no. The overhead door's on the back side, correct, Harold?
I don't think they're in yet. I actually stopped by there today, and I think I counted 23 swinging doors, and there are five overhead doors that do face the street, which I'm kind of, if it says no overhead doors, there's five.
Those are not on Building A.
Right, they're not, but we didn't specify Building A, did we? Did we? Okay.
Yeah, we did.
So, okay. But my comment was-
Because that next building, that was the side of the building. But we didn't, we didn't need to address any but A, because that building faced the other direction, it didn't face the road.
Yeah, but the side now is facing the street.
Now, it faces the side, which is not what we saw that night.
No, it isn't what we saw, nor was presented. Comment I had is, and my intent, and I reviewed some of my notes from the prior meeting, is we did not want any doors facing the street, because one of the neighbors, and if I remember, I think it was Greg's son, came in and had, and showed us a picture of a U-Haul backing up, and said if the U-Haul were to back up to a door, and I think the lady from the applicant said, did this, that if they backed up a U-Haul to the door, that it would block traffic on that frontage road. So we decided we didn't want any doors. Now, I didn't say, I don't think we said, you know, roll doors, I don't think we said this type of door, but I felt like, we said we didn't want any doors on that side, because if you back up a truck, it's gonna block traffic.
Well, I drove out there, yes, it never occurred to me there were gonna be any doors other than overhead doors.
I didn't think, yeah, I was very surprised when I saw 23, I think is the number I counted, swinging doors, so it basically, I felt like it was a slap in the face to the commission.
That, that, that's totally appropriate.
Yeah. Well, Harold-
You read the record, Mr. Chairman, review the record, and Ms. Wallenbar very clearly said, I have no problems with eliminating overhead doors. That's what she agreed to, that's what she thought she was signing. She wasn't, counsel was not allowed, I mean, we were allowed, I was busy doing- That's what she agreed to, that's what she thought she was signing, she wasn't, uh, council was not allowed, I mean, we were allowed, I was busy doing something else, she went ahead and signed it. I- I said, "This just says opening, you said overhead doors."
I can't see that far, but the original condition that was signed that night says no doors on the side of that building. It didn't say overhead doors, it said doors.
It says openings.
Well, that was Charlie's correction. What- what did it-
Openings.
No openings.
It says opening is what Charlie wrote.
No openings.
There are now openings over there.
And, but that's not what she agreed to that night, she signed- she signed, uh, she signed off on that not knowing, she thought what she said here in the open meeting, I have, we will eliminate the overhead doors on Building A, that's what she said, it's in the record, I reviewed- I reviewed it today at the same location on the- on the tape that, uh, Joe indicated to you. That's what she said, that's what she thought she was signing off on, now-
Let me ask you though, Mr. Sims, you're an attorney, so I'm just a lonely banker, when you can't use "I don't know what I signed" as an excuse in court, can you?
She's- she, but she, on the record, told you all what she was agreeing to.
Yeah, but we asked for her not to put doors.
By Charlie's own volition today, he's not happy with the- the general nature of what he wrote. That's not what she agreed to. Now, further complicating this is that, uh, your discussion about the U-Haul truck backing up, we have landscaping, uh, in the front, we also have some, uh, parking in the front that doesn't go perpendicular to these buildings. So, that situation you're talking about is not gonna be there. The whole discussion started- started with Mr. Johnson talking about nineteen overhead doors through there. And that- that possibility of backing up those trucks there, uh, was what he was concerned about. She said, "We will eliminate overhead doors on- on Building A." In addition, the- the concerns about backing up the trucks aren't viable because we have a sidewalk, we have parking that goes the other way, and we have a- a landscape feature in the front. To- my client did not understand that she was agreeing to, uh, an entire expanse of the building without any opening on it.
See, and that's what I understood we approved.
That's what we, that's what we-
Well, he's gonna access them from the-
From the rear.
From the inside.
From the inside.
Access it from the back.
She- she- she, if you- if you listen to the tape, she clearly said, "No overhead doors."
Joe, you don't have, I mean, you wouldn't be able to play that, would you? If you need wifi, I could let you use my wifi on my phone.
Mr. Chairman, you know, my client did not have the opportunity to- to prepare to come-
Right.
To be here tonight, I got a notice about this about one-thirty today and was supposed to be somewhere else tonight and agreed to come here.
We can, if you want, I mean, we can, this was only discussion.
My client really doesn't want to delay the matter because as you know, they're in the process of building.
Right. I guess I was probably just pretty shocked when I saw the, A, I don't know if I've ever seen storage units like that before.
But, but, Mr. Chairman, if I might, the plans that showed the doors that comported with what we thought we- we- we had agreed to, based upon Charlie's indication, this is what I think the commission's intent was, then we turned that into a set of plans that the planning staff reviewed and then a permit was issued on it. So, this body theoretically saw the set of plans and that had the twenty-three openings on it and didn't- and said nothing.
But let me ask you though, the- this commission also did approve, and was it number ten that said no openings on that side of the building, without, with Charlie making the change without our knowledge, he admitted just now that he had no authority to change that, strike anything out and put, my understanding is, opening-
Door, overhead doors.
Overhead doors, well, he- he has no authority, he's only our attorney, uh, for counsel, not for changing a commission.
So, when that came back, when that came back to the board and it was shown and it wasn't what the commission agreed to, how come we-
It's never been brought back to me.
It wa- it, the- the plans were signed off on by the- by- by, uh, planning staff before it went to the- the per- for the permitting process. You review them.
Well, not the building plans, the site plans, so we don't see the door.
My understanding that from- from Mr. Abbott is that you all saw the- the- the plans that were submitted for approval.
Yeah, the site, we- we only see the site plans, they don't indicate where the doors are.
The- the city of Georgetown approved the permit, it wasn't like we- we did this and nobody saw it. We- we submitted plans that we thought were comported with the approvals that we were given that night. If, and, you know, I think, when you listen to this tape, it's called everything from openings to doors to overhead doors. Uh, Mr. Johnson refers to overhead doors, we refer to openings, uh, you know, Ms. Wallenborg clearly thought she was signing off to what she told the board she- she would clearly eliminate.
Oh, what she signed off, it said no openings, correct?
I can't argue with what- with what he wrote.
Right.
But he, it was also given to her and with- without the ability of council to review it. She had already signed it, she thought she was agreeing to what she had spoken to.
So, Charlie, question I think I have for you is our legal counsel, whatever you wrote on there and- and somebody signs, they're technically signing and agreeing-
The binding document is the one we did that night at the meeting. Now, my interpretation is just my interpretation.
And so, unfortunately, you shouldn't have changed that document after the fact.
Well, I didn't change the document, I wrote a note at the bottom of it.
Oh, I thought some- something was struck, I can't see that far, so I thought something was-
That would've been her handwriting.
Struck out.
Again, I don't remember any of it.
Oh, okay.
But that's my handwriting at the bottom of the document, I did say that's what I thought you were meaning.
I have a certain amount of question about whether that was done that night when she signed it, because if you notice, there's- there's a signature line, can we go back to the, well, you're right at the- that point?
Oh, there you go, I got it.
You go, the- the one that says staff copy on the left.
But then it had the twentieth date on there somewhere.
The one that has the staff cop- copy on the left-
Yes, their change is the twenty-first.
Has the signature of the two parties. It- it has the signature of the two parties with the date.
Opening roadside, on access roadside.
The one next to it, there's a- a signature and then we have the, the one with the, uh, overhead doors written.
She signed it, she initialed it and she wrote this, because it's all the same.
And Charlie indicated that was his belief, that that was the actual intent.
So, Mr.-
Twenty-first at the bottom?
Twenty-first.
For twenty-first. Mr. Sims, I- I- I do like to analyze writing and ink, so, and as I'm looking on this, Charlie's penmanship, CP, it's his initials, "No unit in Building A opening on access roadside." Then it looks like, is it Melanie, is that her first name?
Yes.
So, Melanie looks like in her ink, that black ink signed it, she initialed it MW, and then she took it upon herself to strike out the word "opening," put a little arrow in there, it says "with overhead doors." And then she also initialed that as well, admitting that she took it upon herself to strike out a word that we had approved. Should that not have been brought up that night?
That's the word that she used in the meeting.
Well, but that does, she can't take that upon herself to change our documents or our-
When she got over there, she should've said, "Wait a minute, I've got a problem with this document."
Yeah, not change, take it upon herself, whether-
That's why we approved it is because-
We said no openings on the access roadside.
Otherwise, we probably would've said, "No, forget it."
Because our copy says opening, not overhead doors.
That's what the- that's what she agreed to.
So, the writing on here both-
Well, then this should've been discussed again because our copy says openings, not overhead doors.
And she took it upon herself to write opening.
She should've brought it up, if there was a question at that time.
So, next minute-
Well, that question wasn't raised that night.
Right.
That opening door insertion was not done the night of the meeting. The night of the meeting, it was my language across the number ten with my initials and her initials.
Right.
That was all that was on there the meeting night. The other stuff was done subsequent to that.
So, the striking of the word "opening" was done on the twenty-first?
Either at the time we were talking or it was done, it's, you know, wait a time.
The reason I say it might've been done the same night, it looks like the same ink from her signature, her date, her initials.
Yeah, it was not, that was not, no, that was not, which is why our file does not have-
Oh, our file doesn't even have her-
No, our- our- ours has what was adopted, which is the original sentence.
I have an issue with that, you can't change.
There we go.
No units in Building A, opening on access roadside, that's what I remember, there's a-
Yeah.
They were, they agreed to that, said, "No, we don't have any."
Because of a safety issue.
Right.
Of stopping traffic on that access road.
Which, Mr. Smith, and there's, we- we- we discuss that and what- and what she agreed to that night, and she says, "I will eliminate the overhead doors." That's what she thought she was signing off on, everybody, you- you voted after that, she- she went over there, she thought she was agreeing to what, uh, she had told the commission.
So, Mr. Sims, what's the difference of her striking out the word "opening" versus striking out number seven completely and initially after the fact? And I'm just drawing up number seven, just out of the blue, I don't care what number you strike, can, somebody can't go in, change our approval.
I'm not suggesting that-
She did.
But, and we went to Charlie and I said, "Charlie, is this, what do you mea- what- what did you mean?" And then he signed it off on, I think the above with- with the overhead doors is what the commission intended.
But unfortunately, Charlie doesn't have that authority.
We, I think we've established that.
Okay. So, at this point, we're, um, at fault of violating what the rules are and we need to cease? Charlie, are we looking to, what are we looking to do if she violates the rules?
My client is-
As far as tonight goes, we're not taking any action.
Well, that's true, we can't do anything.
Uh, but I think what they would need to do is to basically make a request to come back before and show why this needs to be different. Period. But otherwise, no, the ruling you made on the fourteenth of February, I mean, that's still the approval, period.
Do we send a violation or an ordinance, or not a violation, A?
That'd been an appropriate step too, yes, sir.
So, we'll probably, okay, so we'll probably have to have- have them cease work at this point because they violated the conditions.
On Building A.
On Building A, right?
Well, and possibly on the building to the left, since it has actually open- overhead doors that go out to the road and-
Yeah, and there weren't openings.
And they were not on that plan.
Okay. So, because this is discussion, we don't have anything to vote on, it's just a discussion, but I think, uh, the-
I think what- what was hopeful, uh, by the applicant was for you all to say, "Oh, that is what we meant." Well, but it clearly wasn't.
It wasn't.
So, then, regular process needs to go into place.
So, I think, I think the intention was to have a- a clean- clean slate across that whole side, so you don't have-
So, you had, so you would have a solid sheet of sheet metal on- on three sides of the buildings?
Correct.
I think the intention was that all- all access was gonna be from the backside.
From the backside and the inside.
People be parked on the backside to unload.
I clearly think that that, if a review of the tape would indicate that that's not what my client thought was going on when she signed off on that. She may have been mistaken, she maybe shouldn't have signed, but her intent was- was not to, in any way to see the board, she did, she thought she was signing off on what she had told you she was willing to do. That is obvious when you read the ta- listen to the- the tape.
But I- I feel like it's a blatant disregard for us as a commission to strike something out at a later date or time.
She- she did that in an effort to try to understand what it meant. Does it mean this, will you take it to Charlie and see if- if that's the commission's intent? He thought it was the commission's intent.
Why didn't you take it to Joe?
But we- we were trying, I was, I deal through a council. She sent it to me, we find it.
And my problem was, I'd never seen a unit with swinging doors.
I haven't either.
That we were talking about anything but overhead, so that's- that's my mistake. But no, I don't change rulings.
I think that-
I tell people what I think they mean, but I don't change rulings.
I think the discussion of those units, as I recall listening to the meeting today, is that those are the climate-controlled units, so, uh, they evidently have a little bit of different-
Yeah, that made, that's my-
Use than some people, I don't, I don't know.
So, again, we're not making any votes today, is our recommendation though, Charlie, can we recommend a-
Well, you can ask staff to, you know, take action, sure.
To, we would ask staff then-
I think they're all noticing we're not happening.
Well, I mean, I think we need to also have staff tell them that they need to stop working on at least that front unit for the time being and that side unit that they've also put in rolling doors that we're not on.
That- that's all news to me, so if you have a problem with the side unit.
No, no, but I don't-
Yeah, but we talked about openings on the street side.
I didn't think we wanted any openings on the street side, I don't think we were specific to Building A.
But there didn't have to be conditions, the building, the conditions.
But was that on the plan, Doc? I don't remember ever seeing openings on that, because it faced, what, west, it did, or north?
North, I think, north.
I guess that's north.
It is north.
Yeah, it's north.
Yeah, I don't remember any openings.
I just can't imagine that building was anything like the configuration it has now.
All right. So, we ask then as a commission? Oh, no, we don't need to go into executive session, I mean, we can if we wanted to, but, you know, another day.
So that they can get it resolved as quickly as possible instead of waiting a month.
We might be able to do that.
Yep.
Go into executive session.
Well, what you might do, uh, I don't know that this is too far off of the usual process of we have a disagreement, take it to the executive committee.
Executive committee, that's right.
Maybe do that.
And that way, we can get it done fairly quickly.
Take it to executive committee, we have, I have a couple other items for executive committee.
All right, let's do that, so this way, Doc, was we can maybe address it instead of waiting another month.
We can executive committee meet, so I can-
We have to set a date.
We'll set a time and date. Mr. Johnson, did you want to speak?
It'll be tomorrow, because I'm out tomorrow.
I need to get a little bit of notice too.
Probably, uh, do you want to set a date for executive?
Uh, you can look real quick, I mean, I don't mind.
I prefer next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday?
I could do next Wednesday.
What time do you all?
Can we do it at?
Come to hospital, come to hospital.
But that's why we have those, so it would be me and then Jeff, a lot of times during the day, can't make it, right, Jeff? Or is it Byron?
Neither one of them.
Yeah, neither one, I think it-
James, right.
Yeah, I think it applies to Byron.
Oh, that's right, it's James, Charlie, myself, and you.
Well, Byron's not here and Jeff's not here, so.
Right, but there's four of us.
Byron is the fifth.
Is the fifth.
Yeah, Byron's the fifth, I think, yeah.
Will you be able to make it, next Wednesday?
I don't know anything right now.
Can you be able to stop it?
Yep.
Uh, it looks like three of us can make it on Wednesday, three out of five.
I have, I have a hearing before the ABC Board.
Okay.
In Frankfurt, at one o'clock that day, I could be back later and then-
We can do it in the afternoons, fine.
We're doing it about?
Four o'clock-ish?
I- I should be back by then.
All right. If not, let us know.
If not, there's something wrong.
Can you make it more, you usually do four-thirty. Yeah, you might be up at four o'clock.
Okay.
You ain't gonna be ready to come back to no meeting.
Mr. Johnson has something to say.
Yes, Mr. Johnson?
You know, I just want to say a couple things, Greg Johnson, um, I don't know what her intent was or my intent, but I was certainly thinking that we were all discussing about traffic on the access road and that was our big thing, we like, we don't want to block, there's- there's five people on the access road, they're one of them. The other four will all said the same thing, we don't want anything blocking the access road, we don't care if it's a roll-up door or an open door, if somebody's gonna bring a trailer and a- or a U-Haul there, they're gonna block the road. And so, when you look at this document, I'm- I'm just confused a little bit. It says no units and then it says storage, so I assume that was put on that night. No storage units in Building A opening on access roadside.
What I remember about the storage units was the office was there, so the- the office is gonna have a door open to the- to the street, but-
Sure, I get that.
But the storage units were-
I get that.
And I don't have the plans in front of me, but I do remember a walkway along the front of the building, which was told that they could park all along it and then walk back to-
Please, can I, can I, can I finish, please? I- I don't say anything. So, now there's twenty-two, I think, the twenty-third one is actually a hallway that exits to the outside, it's right in the middle, it's got a glass in it. And you have to go into that door to get to the inside doors. So, there's probably forty units accessible from that one door. So, they're gonna park there, any of those units inside are gonna park out on the access road-
Yep.
-in order to get through that to get to the interior climate-controlled units. So, that one door is probably gonna do twice as much traffic as all the other twenty-two doors, because it's out on the access road also.
I think that completely goes against our-
I think that's what you all meant, I, and it's clear that if she says, "I didn't understand what you meant," she did have to come back seven days later to ask for clarification, so I think she had it in her mind that she knew what she agreed to and she was looking for another way, but anyway, I want to look at, just- just real quickly, this is the doc- this is the document that Charlie and Mrs. Wallen, whatever her name is, uh, signed. All right?
Wallenberg.
All right, and you'll notice that she initialed it here and Charlie initialed it below. Can I put, can you put the other document up? So here's the new one, now Charlie's above and she's below, that's a different document.
Wait a minute, go back.
Yep.
Well, they, they signed two copies.
Okay.
And so it's not.
Oh, and I guess that's true, that, that's true.
So you put storage here once and she put storage.
No, I put storage there both times, that's my ink.
Well, on the other one.
On the other one.
The other one, it's black ink, Charlie.
So, that's, that could make a little sense, but then Charlie initialed this.
No, I put storage in, that, I don't.
Go back to that other one, it is black.
The storage is black.
Yeah, it's just kind of weird, it is black, and that is her writing, Charlie, not.
That's not mine, yeah.
Now go back to the other one and I see where Charlie has initialed this one, but she only initialed this one. So I got a question, was this written after this? Charlie didn't remember.
Yes, it was.
So I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I'm assuming it was, but I don't remember, but I'm assuming it was.
He doesn't remember, so anybody can do this and then initial it, but Charlie didn't initial that. So that, that kind of raises a little bit of a question.
Once again, I'll try to clarify.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really sure I did that after that.
He, she sends that to me with the, with overhead doors on it and asked me to get Charlie's, uh, is, is this what the understanding was? I, I tried for a week to tie up with Charlie, he's busy, I'm busy, I finally get him on the 21st and then he writes the, the note on the bottom. It's very clear, before anybody has to revisit that again, Charlie doesn't have the ability to, to change what you all, what, what was written that night. But what I'm saying is that she didn't understand that she had agreed to no openings. She thought she had agreed to no overhead doors.
What I remember is we, we plainly said, if the office is right here, people have to park somewhere in order to, in order to sign up and in order to have a key to get into the, get into the facility.
We have to discuss next week because I don't.
Now they, now they don't need a key to get in the facility, they just park out front, walk in.
Parking where you're saying they're going to park, when the configuration of the parking is going opposite to pulling in, to backing into those units and they, they have to cross over landscape to do it.
Well, it's, if that wasn't our intention, our intention was to keep the, keep the piling up of cars there in the front instead of.
On the road.
Yeah.
On the road.
Because if you get three, more than three or four cars there, they're probably going to be backed up out onto the road, especially if one or two people come in to.
And I do remember myself asking the question was, was there going to be enough room between building A, and I can't remember, but it would have been the north building to pull a vehicle through there to then unload while you're inside the property, hence the reason why we didn't want any openings on the outside of the property. And the question was clearly there was enough room between building A and again, it would have been the northernmost building and I remember, I can't remember, it's 30 feet or 35, Doc, but they clearly said, oh yeah, there's going to be enough room to drive in, turn around, pull up, so.
We usually find that tape and listen to it.
Well, we can, I mean, we don't want to do that tonight.
Yeah. No, no.
All right, I think we're done talking. Anybody else got anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn, hang on.